On her way from her leadership obligation and looking for a motion to establish the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor? Students?
Hi.
And board?
I'm.
And so that's two zero four zero. I didn't hear a vote from Christina, but she's thriving, so we don't need one. Okay, I just keep looking to see if she goes off mute. We, our first item up is Board Policy 1005, Board Officer and Board Member Duties Reorganization of the Board. I just wanna, I mean, I know we just approved the agenda, but do we want to do this while Christina is not here?
No, 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 no.
No, we want to wait. Okay. So.
Three B maybe would be a suggestion and where we could.
Jump to? Should we jump to three B? Okay. Is that, I know we just approved the agenda. I should have brought it up before that. But let's go to three B, which is Board Policy 1800 OE6 Budgeting Financial Planning Contract for Construction Management for Mary Wait Pool Project.
We in, during agenda planning, Director Glowitz and Director Larry and myself, we talked about this was going to be on consent. But it, in conversation, I think they brought out that we'd rather maybe just have a general update, kind of where we are with the pool project, especially given the fact that it's a pretty good chunk of our cap tech levy, and we've received some matching funds. And then we would be remiss not to also call out the partnership we've continued with, with Brandy and CPM. So want to turn it over to you first off, just to talk about our project, where we are. We had a big week this week, so we're rolling right along.
So you know that we secured the grant from King County. We submitted for interview for and were approved for alternative delivery format for this project. And so we were approved to use progressive design build. This is the first time the district's used this method. It allows us to pick a contractor and an architect based on qualifications. And to work through the scope of the project and then negotiate the guaranteed maximum price. Given that we have a very finite, limited amount of money, it's very clear what that has to be, and we have to get as much scope into that as possible. And we received qualifications and then this week interviewed three firms, three partnership firms between architects and contractors for the work. And then next week, we will open their request for proposal and their pricing factor, and then we'll proceed on to start the design work. So pretty excited about that. And Ed was instrumental in helping us prepare for that, and Walter Shack, another person that I've been working with. And it was really, it was really an opportunity for the district to do a dry run of what we're going to do on bond projects, to apply to the state agency, go through the process of review and interview and to team approval. So we got a lot of the late work done on pool to accomplish that.
So is the, so the plan for the bond projects is to do the same?
Alternative delivery. Yeah, and I think it's, there's still a question of whether we want that to be progressive design build or GCCM, which we talked about in the past, and that's still yet to come.
What percentage of projects these days would you say are progressive design build?
You know, it's interesting, more and more projects are going, I mean, I would say, first of all, a very low percentage are going low bid. And they're, you know, very specific projects that are going low bid, and they're not big elementary or middle school or high school projects. Or if they are, there are very few of them. Between the GCCM and the progressive design build, I would say more are going progressive design build. Ed, do you have any?
The last presentation I saw on this said that we had just reached a crossover point where slightly more were going progressive design build, but it's still almost. And what are the benefits and what are the drawbacks?
What's unique about progressive design build is it allows you to hire the contractor, and then the architect works for the contractor. And it, so the district or the owner has one contractual relationship. You know, in the low bid or even in GCCM, you have this three-legged stool, where the owner's in contract with the architect and the owner's in contract with the contractor. And the two of them are working together, but all of it flows through the owner, all the risk and everything else. Think that progressive design build, and we went through a big procurement process, procurement workshop to determine the right method to use. And what's so unique about the pool is that there are, there are things that we need to know that will drive how much we have to spend on other things. So for example, we have some soft spots in the liner. And if we were to do a GCCM or a low bid, we might say replace the liner. We might not need to replace the liner. We might be able to go in and do the repairs. And so to have a contractor partner at the table who can help us go in and determine what needs to be accomplished, and then scope the rest of the project is really helpful. And so I think they're, they all have their place. And there's not one method that works for everything. I think you need to look at each project very individually. A lot of things that weigh into it.
We spent several hours doing the training that I was part of, and Tony and Matt and Brandy and others. And then we've got more training and some more stuff coming up, just so that we are wide-eyed in learning all about these different components. It's been very interesting, though I wasn't part of the process in the, the last bond. You know, we've been traditionally doing low bid on pieces, but some of the, I guess, the ability to have an architect and our general contractor really having to work together right from the start seems very beneficial, not only in terms of the scope of the project and getting it done, but our management and oversight of that and being able to not get in the middle of two entities that may disagree on something. Well, they have to work it out because that's the way this is set up.
Yeah, yeah. And again, like we talked about before, we are selecting people based on who is most qualified to do the work, not who gave us the lowest possible number and then set us up for conflict all the way through construction. So definitely better use of us.
Great. Any other questions, comments? All right, looking for a motion to approve the CPM Mary Waitpool PDV project contract.
So moved.
All in favor? Students?
Hi.
And directors?
I'm.
Any opposed? Two zero four zero.
Do you want to do finances?
Sure.
Director Sullivan?
Would love to. Provided to you is our monthly financial report, budget status reports, financial dashboard, and the notes through October of this year. As we presented in September, I had nothing to compare month over month. Now we do, hence October's been reconciled with financials from King County. Like I said, the board docs are the notes of the financial dashboard. Walk through them briefly. We're through October, obviously sixteen point six percent of the year. Expenditures about seventeen percent, so tracking right along. Revenues about eighteen point eight percent. Of course, this is higher because October we received a chunk of our EPNO levy, our local taxes, so that's why the increase there. I would like to point out in revenues where year-over-year, myself and Director Adams have been tracking that collection, whether that be the cap tech and or the EPNO levy. This year, we've seen thirty-six point six percent of the EPNO levy revenues, and we've received thirty-six point one percent of the cap tech levy. That's typically lower than what we like to see. We kind of see a fifty-fifty split typically. But we're seeing a little bit less. That said, it will true up year-over-year. I think we collected like ninety-nine point eight percent of taxes when it all was said and done. But it doesn't help this time of year in regard to that cash in hand, that fund balance. So that's why you see a little bit less of a fund balance year over year. I don't really have a great explanation as to why, but that's just what we received via King County collections on that side. Expenditures, special education, month over month, a little bit of a change there. The increase September to October is due to some contracted services via your consultants, occupational therapist at agency contract, et cetera. And then as of October, we had two out-of-place statements. I know we discussed that in the past. I want to bring that to your attention. But currently, we have one out-of-state placement in comparison to the large out-of-state placements we had last year. So a good thing. Support community services and expenditures. Just the decreased month-over-months that's due to that large insurance bill. Though the risk wasn't, I guess there's some risk from insurance, but in common parlance, our insurance bill, which is due that first half of one point one million to start the year September, so you see a drop-off in October. Revenues, we talked about state apportionment. Federal grants, the increase from September to October is due to those grants being reimbursable. So we file for those end of September and start to receive that revenue, that income. And then just the monthly fund balance, cash on hand, we're tracking somewhat similar year-over-year. But as I mentioned, that local taxes, EPNO levy doesn't help that increase. But we should see six to seven hundred thousand coming in November, the kind of trailing collections that comes in month over month. So it looks pretty good. We're tracking where we should be, and I don't have any concerns or issues to point out at this point.
Where do we anticipate that the year-end fund balance will be?
Oh, that's a little ways off. We initially had looked at, top of my head, we spoke with Director Adams and Assistant Director Garcia Barber. And I would say, just talk about it today, I'm blanking on it.
So four and a half?
About four and a half, three, I was a million figures what I was looking at. And I don't have. Good question, my apologies. Of where we were last year, yes, that is the plan at this point. Anything changes, we'll let you know sooner than later.
Five percent or do we?
We don't know. About a half a percent or so, as we were three point eight percent at the end of last year.
We are just, is it three point six million, four and a half percent around there.
Just a question back with the specialized services. What category do those out-of-state placements fall under? Is that under special education slash services or is that under?
It can fall under there, but also fall under contracted services too.
I see. Okay. The tax collection is not getting the expected amount because people aren't paying them to the county? Or because the county isn't forwarding them to us?
No, it's not, they're not forwarding to us. It could be the former, not for our.
Got it.
But I don't want to speculate. I don't know.
Or I, county's not receiving them?
Correct.
Okay, so they pass on the percentage that we get based on what they collect.
And typically, we've seen month or year-over-year, October, November, is you'll see six hundred, seven hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand coming in November, December, et cetera. So we track that really closely.
Sometimes people defer or whatever on your taxes.
Yeah, not, I'm just looking for the reason. I'm not pointing fingers, just want to know like how that works. I'm sure I ate every bill in my life on time. Um, any other questions? Thank you. Do you want me just to run? We'll just keep being efficient. Should we go to student representatives' report?
Sure.
All right, next up, we'll do Board Policy 1250, Students on Government and Board, Student Representatives Report.
All right, well, last week we had SSA. And at SSA, we talked about how to create change using some of the links, the why, how, what framework. It was super great. So we had a discussion on why we're helping the students and why we're doing this. It was super awesome. And then we also did final edits to the new student survey that we're going to be putting out at the end of this week. So then we'll hope at the next week to start working on what we're going to do to help students. Then moving on to elementary schools. All elementary schools hosted their parent-teacher conferences over the Thanksgiving week, which was a great way to wrap up the first trimester. West Mercer also hosted its culture fair, which was sponsored from the PTA TBI committee. Their graders made presentations about their culture, shared food, and saw performances from the high school band and drill team. Then for World Kindness Day, students at Northwood wrote kind messages on hands in magical patterns and words from ways they could share kindness through their words and actions. Some messages included, "Be you, you are brave, be who you are, and you matter." Many classes also learned about history of Thanksgiving and spent time celebrating this from facts about Thanksgiving.
And then Northwood's green team members also made posters about microplastic pollution and its impact on the ecosystem and human health in order to raise awareness on the issue. And all the elementary schools have been hosting their winter music concerts, with many happening that happened earlier this week, and island parks happening this coming Wednesday. And then West Mercer also hosted their PTA Pancake Breakfast this morning with an additional magic show from Jeff Ed. And then at the middle school, the IMS Choir Orchestra had their field trip to IMS Mercer Island High School yesterday, where they got to meet their high school counterparts and learn new songs. The IMS band also went to Bellingham for collaborative project with the Western Washington University Music Program. And they received clinics from Professor Paul Vane, who I think is the composer for some of their songs. And also worked with a bunch of Western Washington University students. And then on the way back from Bellingham, they ice skated at the Kraken Iceplex, which is really cool. And then the IMS band is hosting their winter music concert on Tuesday, December seventeenth. And the sixth grade orchestra is hosting the Tunes and Treats music concert on December nineteenth.
And the middle school also referred to be very soon during the power outage, teachers were very understanding and empathetic rescheduling tests and assignments so students could properly make their welcome time. IMS also had a spreading kindness like content campaign where students and staff engaged in a series of kindnessy events during lunch that were hosted by the leadership students. Sixth grade language arts classes at the middle school were also engaging in their perspective units, where they learned how to do narrative writing and read short stories to learn how to make inferences based off of text evidence. Seventh graders are learning about film and comparing scripts to their immediate versions. Eighth grade language arts students are also writing tiny memoirs about meaningful moments in their lives.
And then last month, something else that exciting that happened in the class classrooms are two former Air Force pilots, Mr. Vivian and Mr. Dennis, came to IMS's aerospace class to speak about their experience as fighter pilots. And they came to give their presentation during, at the end of their airplane unit. And yes, and then IMS also had their first meet against Holt Wrestling League. And that ended in a IMS victory, so the wrestling team's off to a great start. And then the IMS Where Everybody Belongs Club, which is like the eighth graders, like much like sixth graders, they gave students and staff hot chocolate before school, and that was a great time for the IMS school community to bond. And then additionally, Jordan Lusek, the editor of the MIHS Islander, went down to the middle school to interview kids at the, in the IMS music club and yearbook for an upcoming story on Student Voice. And like, I think Mr. Henry's working on, working with Jordi Palma's story, so yeah, exciting. And then also more, speaking of these like inter-school connections, MIHS will be hosting a Future Islander Night for middle schoolers to come and learn more about the different classes and programs at the high school. And this will be happening on Thursday, January sixteenth, from five thirty to seven thirty.
And then at the high school, we've also been hearing from high schoolers about the appreciation of teachers coming back from the power outage. It is very, teachers being very, assuming with due, even assignments, we push back and many tests as well. Many classes are also now, of course, behind in our plan to get curriculum back on track. Many teachers, including Neil Anis, have been hosting Zoom classes to help their senior students get extra test prep for their competitive and online tests. Related to teacher understanding, there's been a feedback surrounding the no homework being given to students over Thanksgiving break. SSA and High School Senate worked together on a project a couple of years ago to bring this to attention and to light. And since then, having no homework over break has become way more ingrained into the school culture and seems to have become just an automatic instinct of teachers, which has been super awesome for students. We've also talked a little bit about Little Shop of Fours music hall, which got really great. And we still involved them in their closing show despite the power outage, which was awesome. And that they were not able to make up the one show that was canceled due to the outage.
And another event that was canceled due to the outage was that MIHS Student Senate hosted Flood Drive, which I think they did their first one like last year, the year before. And this is a little sad because a lot of students, a lot of people were signed up to donate and many students were signed up to volunteer. But the MIHS HOSA Club, which is like the Health Occupations Students of America, will probably be hosting Flood Drive towards the end of the school year and maybe collaborating with the Senate, so stay tuned for that. Other events coming up are the MIHS Band's Winter Concert, which will be, which will occur on Tuesday, December eighteenth. And admission is free. Skybird was also down for a day last week, and so our lunch ladies did have to handwrite all the student lunch numbers and transactions, which like, they thank our lunch ladies so much because like their foreheads suffered so bad. Like they had to write like pages and pages of like transactions by hand, so yeah, we thank them for that. And then winter sports are in full swing now. With all sports having their like first meets and games. I know like wrestling has like a meet today, gymnastics have their meet. Basketball, boys and girls basketball had like game. And there's also girls flag football, which is currently like still considered a club, not an official sport. They've also been practicing, and I think they're practicing on the field right now. And then Unified Sports Basketball is also starting soon with practices happening every Friday.
Last week, we also had a successful Winter Spirit Week, featuring a cozy pajama day, snow day, a Dream Team's Day, Jersey Day, and Blue and White Out on Friday, and a Winter Assembly on Friday. Here's the, oh, the cheer team also performed their competition routine as this is their second year going to competitions, which is super great. Drew also performed a routine they learned at Dance Camp this summer and will have their first competition of the season on Saturday. Winter wishes were also granted to Athlete Assembly, so the blue, green stickers, someone brought a bag of Hershey's Kisses, et cetera. And the wider looks forward to student versus teacher basketball at a game ended when the student win a three to zero. Miss Canyon also helped organize a college career, technical college fair yesterday during island hour. There are booths for cosmetology, it's met schools, military school booths, it's for job and internship, all the trainees at hotels, there's a beach club, a restaurant chamber of Congress, and then real estate firms. There was also a UC application workshop. The college and career continues to provide lots of help to seniors and other students looking forward to their post-high school plans. Seniors Liam Chester, Simone, I don't want to mispronounce that, sorry. Merrick Lofer and Chloe Yang were recognized as the Mercy Island Wordly Islanders of the Month in front of November and December. Every month, two islanders were awarded the Mercy Island Word of the Month for recognition for the community service that had years of high school or the other years of high school. Students were nominated by departments and then selected. Then a selection committee reviews applications and nominations before selecting award recipients. The word, the word recovers to bring together business people and professionals and provide communitarian services, encourage high ethical standards in applications, and to advance goodwill and peace around the world.
And in addition, Ivy has been running the tree lock for a couple of weekends now. I think this weekend is their last weekend to be reopened, but their hours are from ten AM to five PM on Saturdays and noon to five PM on Sundays. So at the Mercy Island Presbyterian Church, so we encourage you guys to head over there if you haven't already. And something cool about them is all the profits are shared between the Mercy Island Youth and Family Services and their Mercy Island High School's Mercer Trade Inc., which is like the company that is within the high school. And then also DECA is going to the area competition at Maidenbauer Center tomorrow. And there's going to be like hundreds of Mercy Island business students hopping on buses tomorrow at six thirty AM, which is quite early to attend. And if you didn't know, DECA is like a business competition where students can participate in like role plays or like prepare presentations and like business reports on different categories. And last year, the MIHS DECA program sent many students to state and international level competitions. So we're excited to see what this year holds in store. And also something that's on the side note is there are a lot of things that are lost and found so recently. Administration put out all the sudden lost and found in the hallway. And so like now, when you walk in the doors of the school, like you walk by like a table of like fifty water bottles and like a huge pile of jackets. So yeah, that's just a side note. I haven't seen many of the water bottles being taken away, but yeah. And then the IMS Mercy Island High School Islander newspaper is working on a culture issue that will be released before winter break. And then, yeah, as we are getting closer to winter break, many classes are slowing down and students are just antsy to get gone break. And a lot of senior festivities have also been happening. The senior superlative nominations were just made available on Monday. And many seniors are very excited about like nominating their peers. And today, there's also a Zelle's fundraiser for the senior graduation party, and a lot of students purchased lunches. Yeah, a lot of fun things going on.
Sounds great.
What are the senior superlatives?
Um, they range like from a bunch of different categories. Some of them are like most likely to come back to, never leave Mercer Island, or like most likely to be a billionaire, or like shortest, tallest. So there's a lot of fun superlatives. So get a vote here.
Thank you.
We pressed it over three hundred DECA participants for tomorrow. When Jen McCollum first took it over, when she was there, we were barely at a hundred, maybe even under a hundred. And now we're sending over three hundred students to Maidenbauer Memorial to participate, so it's pretty cool.
I'll be there.
Yeah.
Do you need to judge? Anyone else? It's really fun if you ever want to. It's that mindset. I would be happy to have everyone. And you don't need any knowledge. It's pretty easy to judge. I mean, you need knowledge to participate, not to judge. And then, oh, just one thing is, I just mentioned to Dr. Rundle yesterday. Since the Future Islander Night is during a board meeting, we can talk about if we want to start a little early or go a little late or take a break in between, so we can pop over and check it out if there's desire for that. So we scurried over last year, but kind of hit it right as people were figuring out. So that's an option we have. And going back up to?
Two A.
Two A, Board Reorg, Board Policy 1005, Board Officer and Board Member Duties Reorganization of the Board. At our first regular meeting, only regular meeting in December, we elect new leadership within the board. We're electing a president and a vice president for one-year terms. In the past, just the change is we also did the led rep, but that changed with the policy that we adopted in the spring in terms of a new schedule for led reps, so that is no longer here and now. So I'm looking for nominations for president.
I nominate Christina. I think she do a good job of fostering discussion. And I think has the trust of the entire, like, all members on the board. And I think having like relatively franchise can be invigorating and good.
Is there, well, I have to say that I have to decline the nomination, and I, I'm honored and I am by showing up late, so I am actually on my end of what I can think on. And with the legislature, what we're doing, I feel that this is the year that I'm really going to focus on what I started with the led rep and finish strong. And being so new, I feel that I need to learn a lot more experience. So I am deeply appreciative of your confidence. And when my time comes to be announced, I promise to be the president that you all expect me to be. But for now, I think that, I feel that I will not do a good service for the full school district and our board if I just, like today, it's going to be a regular thing that will get delayed. So yes. Thank you. Any other nominations? I nominate Maggie Teichupper to take on the presidency. And I'll say. Do you accept? You accept the nomination? Any other nominations? All right, so we have we do roll call vote, which is I go to each individual. we do a roll call vote, which is I go to each individual for their individual vote. Um, I think technically we don't ask students on this.
They, we've done, they abstained in the past. I, I don't, that's what you did la, I think last year at my recollection is you abstained from it, but.
Yeah. Uh, I'm, I'm happy for you to.
And you don't have, but you don't have to include them in this vote either. That's just what we did last year, but it doesn't have to. I think they talked about it already, they were gonna abstain anyway.
Oh, I could choose into abstaining, I mean, yes, you? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Um, all right, so Director Martinez, uh, I, or name, I mean, I, uh, Director Pepper?
Hi.
Director Lee?
Hi.
Director Loitz?
Name.
And my, I vote yay. So that is a vote of four to one. Um, and I would, uh, declare Maggie Tyteupper as the next president and will happily switch seats with her now, and she will take over immediately. It is immediate. Yes, it is.
Thank you, everyone. Um, I did not think I would be doing this again so, so soon after. Seems like less, less than that. Um, thank you. Do we not need to like approve last minutes meetings or something? Last minute meetings?
We don't because it's the same board.
Uh, okay, okay.
We had that discussion.
Okay, so, um, now, can we just go ahead? Do I have to form in? Sorry.
Nope, nope. You just go right into.
Okay, so now we have a vice president, so are there any nominations for vice president?
Uh, I nominate Jovi Lee.
Is there a second? Um, are there any other nominations for vice president? Okay, then, um, are you, can I assume you guys are gonna abstain again? Okay, then we'll do a roll call vote, so Christina?
Hi. Hi, hi. Abstaining.
Abstaining? My vote is a I. That is four Is and one abstention? Congratulations. Yes, you guys should.
Yeah, just. Yeah, we'll go on to, um.
Pick up where?
Yes.
So Board Policy Eighteen Hundred O E Seven, Financial Administration Bond Resolution Seven Thirty Six, first meeting.
I join as virtually is Lee Marchisio, uh, Principal Attorney from Boston Guard. You may remember Lee, uh, last January, February, he also does present, uh, Bond Refunding Resolution Seven Twenty Eight, and very proud to introduce him, he's been great to work with, and he's joining us virtually at Spokane, correctly?
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, any, can you hear me?
We're just turning up the volume on the set. Say something.
Okay, how's that?
All right, Lee, it's all yours.
All right, great, um, thank you, Matt. Um, I appreciate that, and yes, directors, I'm, uh, sorry I couldn't be there to, uh, tonight, um, but I am in Spokane. My, uh, colleague and, uh, good friend and mentor, Jim McNeil, is, uh, retiring from the practice of law, and, uh, he's having a little celebration tonight, so I'm here, here for him. I know, um, especially for those of you in education, um, uh, there's that special person in your life that, um, you know, provides you with, uh, guidance and mentorship and, um, whom you owe, owe the world to, and he's, he's one of those individuals for me, so, uh, thank you for your understanding. Um, so, uh, tonight is the introduction of the, uh, bond election resolution that, uh, the board has been, um, discussing for some time, um, I understand, on, on these projects, and, um, so what I would propose to do is just walk through, um, a few of the provisions in the resolution and in what it does and the process. And please, uh, ask questions, uh, throughout the presentation if you have any, and I'd be happy to answer them. Um, again, thank you for allowing me to be here, um, and, and a big thanks to, um, uh, Matt and Fred, um, for their, uh, hard work on this document, and then also, um, to our colleagues at Piper Sandler, in particular Ryan Swanson, for his, his work on this process as well. I know he's presented to this board a number of times too. So, basically, state law requires the board, when it wants to submit a ballot proposition to the voters, to adopt a resolution requesting that the auditor, um, call a special election, and that's really what this Resolution Seven Three Six will do. Um, and so, uh, that is the main thrust of the resolution, and also under state law, when you run a bond measure, the, uh, the bond measure itself must specify, uh, the projects that are to be financed or paid for with proceeds of the bonds, the amount of the bonds, and the maximum term of the bonds. And so all three key provisions there are included in this resolution as well. Um, if we're to walk through the resolution, I would like to point the directors to, um, three sections in particular, and if you scroll down a little further to Section One A, yeah, right there, just back up a little bit, sorry. Yeah, so Sections One A, Section Two, and Section Nine are the three sections that really focus on the projects to be financed with the bonds. And Section One A also additionally focuses on the needs that the district has identified, um, that will be, uh, met by this bond issue and the projects to be financed. So here we've identified, you know, the need to rebuild, modernize, and renovate aging and educationally outdated schools, improve student, staff, and community safety and security, improve and expand educational opportunities and programs, and provide safe, secure.
Smells like, uh, plastic, it's dough line covered.
But I think maybe you said cheese too close or something? Sorry, it just smells like smoke in here.
Please don't add another bond project, truly.
Bond edition averted.
Great. I mean, that's about as exciting as bonds get, I'll tell you. So, yeah, again, the needs and, um, uh, for the projects are identified in Section One A. If you'll go down to Section Two, that's where we describe with more particularity the projects to be financed, and, um, uh, I, I don't think I'll read through these, but just direct the director's attention to those as you continue to review this resolution, um, after first reading today. Those are the projects that, um, that you've all been working on for quite some time now. And then finally, for the projects and the bonds, let's, let's go to Section Nine. And Section Nine right here is the form of the ballot, and this is what the voters will see when they fill out their ballot, uh, next April, if you decide to place this measure on that ballot. And, um, state law has a very specific form for this ballot. There are, as you can see here, two sentences. The very first sentence is a short sentence, and it is, um, it is designed to be the summary of the ballot proposition, and it's called, um, the statement of subject, and it's everything after the word concerning in this first sentence. So this is a proposition to provide safe, modern facilities to han, to enhance learning, and that sentence is limited to ten words, and we currently use all ten words. The second sentence here is, um, the concise description of the measure, and again, it contains those three elements that we discussed, the amount of the bonds, the projects to be financed, and the term of the bonds. It also specifies that, uh, annual excess property taxes will be collected to repay the bonds, to pay debt service on the bond. And here, everything after the word would, the third would, the third word, is limited to seventy-five words in that sentence, and we use all seventy-five words in this draft. So, so we, um, yes, we've used, we've used the maximum number of words here. And this again describes, uh, again, it's a, a concise description, so it's not necessarily an index of everything that we included in Section Two, but it provides, uh, notice to the voters of what they will be approving. And so this is the, those are the essential items that you'll be, uh, approving, uh, and considering for approval at the January meeting. Now, I did wanna mention one other item, is that there are specific roles in here for Superintendent Rundle and, um, and Mr. Sullivan, and those roles are, um, one is to submit this measure, this ballot proposition resolution to the county in order to get it on the ballot, and then the second one is to receive notice of the ballot title, so they can comment on it, um, should there be any need to, um, you know, discuss the ballot form that the, uh, county produces. Under state law, the county prosecuting attorney, uh, has control over, uh, local governmental ballot propositions, and so the, it's conceivable that the county prosecuting attorney could take a different approach to ballot title than the form that's contained in Section Nine, and so that's why we have the, the notice provision, so if that happens, we can enter into discussions with the county and, and try and work through the differences. And that is the, um, that is the resolution in the background, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or go over any of the provisions in more detail, that would be helpful.
Yeah, question? Um, I don't know if this is the right place to ask this, but as, as we all know, um, the pass rate for bonds is sixty percent, um, and asking in light of the fact that two of the fifteen bonds around the state passed at the last, so not a reflection on our voters, because I fully anticipate this plan, um, I, I, I think is excellent and in, in all ways. Um, if the legislate, if the legislators during their current session, um, vote to reduce that pass rate, would that, um, would that impact this, the timing of this bond?
Well, that's a, a great question, so, um, most, no, it would not, because that would, uh, that, the way the legislature would affect that is, um, is by resolution calling for an election to amend the Washington Constitution, because that sixty percent supermajority requirement is in the Constitution, so then that would be, that would need to be passed by the voters before, and there would not be enough time for that to occur, um, by the April election. So, right, and it, it, I mean, we obviously will be following that, it's part of the WASD platform, and if for some reason that comes forward, it, we've unfortunately been unsuccessful in the past, if it does, then, you know, the district, we can monitor that and, um, reconsider if we think if there's a chance that that will happen, you know, reconsider the timing, yeah. It's a good question.
Uh, and just, uh, for clarification, so when you say the, uh, on Section Nine, what is written is what is, in theory, the voters going to see, or, 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 in theory, if they don't qualify it, is that what you said?
Yeah, yes, so that's, this is, yeah, Section Nine is the, uh, Board of Directors' preferred ballot title, and that will be on the ballot, you know, where you fill in the bubbles, it will be just in that like multi-column, like hard, hard paper, uh, tagboard, you know, um, ballot, and so it would look a little bit different, but it does end with the question at the bottom, should this proposition be approved or rejected? And that's where you would, you would fill it in, just like a statewide initiative or, or any other, um, ballot proposition.
Perfect, yes, perfect.
So like all, sorry, just to be super clear, all of that text would be on the ballot?
Correct.
Unless the, the state changes the wording, which is what's with the notice, right?
In county prosecutor.
Yeah.
Right.
I think I have to inform myself and Superintendent Rundle.
Yeah, in, in the rare instance that that would happen, the district would, again, we would try, we would work with the county on the ballot title, and then if we can't come to an agreement, there's a very quick, um, appeal process that the district could, could undertake if it, if it wanted to. It's, and that, that rare, that rarely, rarely happens. In fact, I, I don't know of an instance in the last several years.
Other questions? We don't have other questions right now. Yeah, so what's, what are the next steps then?
So, next, go ahead.
No, no, yeah, the next step would be to, um, yeah, if there are any comments on the resolution, those would come back through, uh, Mr. Sullivan and Superintendent Rundle, and then I would be happy to work with them on producing an updated draft, and if not, then this, um, resolution, I, I believe is currently scheduled to be before the board on, on January sixteenth, and then that's where the board would take final action on this to request, um, uh, the election, the ballot to be placed on the April election.
And then, um, just a couple of things, Andreas, if you would bring up, there's a attachments, it's a PDF on that same section, um, just for the community, we wanted to put up the last couple of resolutions, um, going back in time, so people could see those, and then we had the opportunity, and you're gonna get a bigger update on January sixteen, um, uh, from Director Banners, people, we had a chance to meet with, um, Mr. Marchisio and his, uh, counterpart, uh, and colleague, um, Ms. Bradford, uh, earlier, I think it was this week, it feels like it was a month ago, uh, they kinda walked us through a lot of the do's and don'ts and the parameters around, once we're in an election, the really important steps that we need to take, um, as we're moving forward, and so, um, that bottom of the, the very bottom, yes, yes. Um, so just a couple of things that we have to keep in mind, and I just want you to be aware of, um, you know, coming up after the January sixteenth meeting, assuming that, uh, you do pass the resolution, um, we'll start moving pretty quickly, because we need to get everything into, uh, the county by, uh, the third week of February, so some things that'll be on our minds, working to gather the fore and against, um, statements from community members, and that requires, um, some work on our team, um, finding who those authors might be, we will put that out to the community, um, and then there's a form that actually we fill out, um, after your appointment of those two different groups, and so those are some things that happen right away that I just want you to be aware of. And then on that second slide, um, you know, we go into that mode of needing to really be thoughtful about when we're acting on behalf of ourselves as community members or yourselves as community members, um, versus when you're acting, um, as, as board members. Um, boards can take, um, a load and pass a resolution that supports their own resolution, um, but irrespective of that, that's what the board's speaking, there's always the component then too, um, that we need to be really clear that if we are speaking in favor of the measure, that you're doing that as in. that you're doing that as individuals. Um, otherwise, when you're acting in your board capacity, that's more your objective and fair, and you're presenting facts. So you're in lots of meetings when you're board members, and then you're in the community as as community members. Lee, do you want to add anything else to that? Um, this is just a reminder for all of us more than anything.
Yeah, that's a, that is a great summary. Um, there, the basic rule as just stated is that the district, district resources cannot be used to support or oppose any ballot measures at all. Um, so once this is on the ballot, um the district can put out factual information, and it is, should put out factual information regarding the bonds and the projects. But um none of that work can um either promote or oppose it. And um the same goes for anyone who's working in their official capacity for the district, because your time counts as district resources.
So so here's a question, like I'm looking at the district website right now, and under the long-range facilities planning section, there's a link for upcoming projects, one of which is the Mary Way Pool project that we just discussed, and then potential twenty twenty-five bond projects. And it mentions Islander Middle School and West Red High School. Can we like attach, can we link from that to some of the presentations that have been done, the videos that have been presented? Because like, would would that count as district resources promoting, or it's just informing people? This is a, this is the possible bond project? Because right now it's, those are dead, like it's just the names of the projects?
Yeah, that that would uh most likely, that would be information material that you can produce and distribute in the um normal and regular conduct of the business. So just how you put out information on other district initiatives and activities, you would do the same thing, it would be expected of you to do the same thing to inform the community about your needs and what you're working on with respect to these bond projects. Um, so that would be definitely um uh expected. And, you know, we're working with um district administration on these matters, and we uh would be happy to review any of those materials to make sure that they fall within those fair and objective presentation of the facts. And don't kind of get into the promotional uh, you know, side of it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for being here um and taking some time away from the festivities over there in Spokane. Uh, hope that it goes well, and we'll be in touch as needed, but appreciate your time.
You bet. Thanks, everyone. I appreciate it. Take care.
Thanks.
And definitely want to thank you, Director Sullivan. There's a tremendous amount of back and forth and work that goes into working with our attorneys to get to this point. You know, I know there's a, you know, just when we think we have it, there's some small thing, but thank you for your diligence.
So we've already done E, C, and D. Uh, so we can jump forward to E, which is post-monitoring language review, board policy one thousand and five, board officer and board member duties.
At the last meeting, uh you had some conversation about this. Uh, but in anticipation of your language review, uh one of the things that you noted that was missing was any reference to the students who are on the board. And so you would ask me to come up with some language and propose some language for you that you might consider for your future of um reviews of BP one zero zero five. Um, those are attached uh for this evening, and happy to make any amendments to that language um that you see fit or any other aspects.
I think the student section looks good. And I like the reference to the um, the policy, the specific policy referred to the student reps.
For the twelve fifty.
It seems there's a conflict in terms of the attendance. It says that students representative shall attend with at least one boarding a month, one board meeting a month, and then further down, it says they shall attend the first board meeting of the one, because we want to maintain consistency there. See, I, I guess I think there should be a little bit more flexibility. And then I guess on that, I don't think that attending WASDA should be mandatory.
So can we go, just so I capture these um correctly. So the first one would be, the first question is, under number two, it says attend the first regular board meeting each month, and that's inconsistent with
With attend at least one board meeting, or at least, I mean, that should be
No, not in the first paragraph.
Yes, it should be at least, in my view, additional flexibility and I I won't want to make something too too hard in the past, particularly when I would say it's um more prescriptive than the policy as it pertains to directors, which is not, which is not the absence for consecutive meetings. Um, so I would mirror that. I I think whether students attend WASDA, it's a large time commitment. And I think utility or not of WASDA, um I think there's a range of opinion, and I would encourage students to develop their own opinion on that.
I I agree with the thing about the first regular school board meeting of every month, like that that's just going to be impossible for some students based on their other commitments and and or illness, so like I don't really want to codify it in a way where 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 you're violating, where the students are violating it from time to time. And then it's like, do we like enforce that? Do we do something about that? You know, like, that sounds, I agree.
I mean, that has been ordered or is, I know that's the reason behind it, but.
In changing this language here, we'll want to mirror the change, because this is existing language in twelve fifty. So if we're making, which is fine, if, but if we make changes here, we'll want to also make the changes in twelve fifty. Um, since your predecessors helped write that policy, we would definitely do that in concert with you, and you'd be the drivers on that, on those revisions.
What do you guys think about that, about the necessity of that change?
I think it's probably, it's probably a good idea, I don't know, like it's very easy to do, I think. Having it at least be a recommendation, because it is one of the board reports, so not that's like intensive language, probably like. Uh, yeah, I think one board meeting does work. I feel like it's not that necessary to like modify it, but we can, yeah.
It's not like they're kicking off the board at this meeting, but we, it could easily be changed to attend one regular board meeting each month.
That's the flexibility for you guys. Um, and at the same time, you two have been in every, it's a single one of that, so I don't think that not. It's more for the next few reps if you're always here, so which
I think it's great to have it so um have like the responsibility so working on them, because if someone, even student, younger student is looking at whether they want to, you know, apply for this role, they can see exactly what's expected of them, like, oh, I may need to go to WASDA, you know, to get this many meetings, to do this, to do that. I think it's very helpful, but how do you feel about the WASDA requirement?
I think that that could easily be just like recommended to attend, like you don't have to, because it's probably a general scenario, like you lost a ten, but I think at least having that in there. I know for me, when I was applying, I looked at the board policy just to see like if I was going to take it, and what it would be like, and that was definitely helping me to decide whether or not.
So like recommended to participate in the board?
Or just some sort of like
I I think it's really important, and obviously, I mean, you know, mandatory in terms of if someone has a reason they can't come, it can always be extended, just like anything can. WASDA is our um, you know, it's an advocacy group, but it's also a learning group. And I think that um like, like what Lucy said, you know, when she was applying, she looked at this to see what the obligations and expectations were. I think that, you know, there's organizations that we all belong to, that we might not agree with everything that comes out of them. But, you know, it's it's the, it's the spirit and the education of what we're doing as board directors. Um, and I think that participation is really important. Uh, there's people at WASDA who have lots of different feelings about what WASDA does and doesn't. And advocacy wise, um the way that individual boards choose how the governing process for their boards. And WASDA, um, we elect the leaders of WASDA, and then we all vote on what those, you know, the way that WASDA is run in terms of electing the leaders, and then also in terms of the left in the priorities. We need to learn to advocate in a way that even if we're in the minority position on something, that we don't just throw up our hands and say we're not going to play. Um, that's not the democratic process. And so, you know, I certainly, what, I mean, I don't think we need to put in here that if someone has a a reason they can't be there, a family event, or is sick or something. I mean, I I don't think this implies that at all. And I think that it is an expectation, if you want to participate on the board. Um, you know, the students are not elected officials. Um, I I wish we had stronger regulations with regards to elected officials and things they need to participate in when you're running for office, but we don't. But with students, it is a application process. And I think that um we have lots of students who want to participate and learn and have those opportunities. And I don't think we need to water it down. If someone, if a student has a um objection to something, they can certainly bring it to the board and ask for an exception.
Uh, I think that uh, I will change the leg, the language uh for will be invited more than when invited, because that means that we we are not invited sometimes, and I think that they should always be invited. It does a great opportunity for you to see that happening in different uh school districts and how uh what other things or ideas can be explored in different other ways. So I think that in terms of experience, it is totally something that that it should be uh expected that people participate in. I uh, but I also think that interest outward language should be, you know, be invited, so when invited, because that gives us pause to
That that language is because it's, it, that section refers to all board training sessions. And so every once in a while, there's one where I don't, I mean, it hasn't come up that students haven't been invited. But in case there's one that isn't appropriate for students, I I don't know about the team, but we're, that's
We could change the language to say, up above, it says students shall blah blah blah, right? So it could be students shall be invited to participate in board training sessions and in the annual WASDA conference, blah blah blah. And then it's just like, but that does weaken it a little bit. It does say shall, I can realize this is shall instead of must, so it's a little bit like
Shall is must.
It's exactly the shall, it's a little mild, you know?
I just think that it, you know, it's, we want, we want student directors and board directors who want to participate. And this sends that message. It's, and like I said, I mean, there's no policy that's kicking them off the board if someone gets sick and cannot attend um for whatever reason, but this lays out the expectations very clearly. Um, and that would also, that's that, just um, I'm hesitant to loosen the language, because I wonder if there's a year where maybe we're facing budget constraints, and it is easy to cut, would be like, let's not let our students go. And I think that the expectation should be on the board as well, that the students are a part of this organization, a valued part of this organization, and also, you know, by their attended the conference, building their own knowledge, but doing, like just today, I was on a, I was in a call with Eastside School Board Directors, and um one of the other school board directors was talking about the liaison and the relationship that Ava had built with their student rep during the conference. You know, and that's sort of that, that work is valuable to our board and and our district. And I think that we want to be careful before giving any wiggle room to future boards in different financial situations, where they would be like, well, this is an easy cut, this is an easy budget, you know, yeah.
So leading up to the colon, you have the student representative will. And then one suggestion that I heard then is that you could go right into will be invited to attend board training sessions uh and the annual Washington. So they'll be invited to attend. Is that?
Doesn't sound like there's support for that.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I mean, I do, I do defer to our students, but but I know they look look forward to it, and I hope that is a change in the future.
I mean, I think we can keep that as participating. I mean, it's an important part of the goal, like learning about, it's part of like the onboarding process as well, like learning more about how to better do your job, so. Yeah.
Should we just leave it discussion or?
I think we could switch the first meeting of each month to one meeting one. I agree with that suggestion. Uh, I think we keep this one as, I think we keep eleven as the wording. Is that like a
Do you guys understand the motion?
Yeah, can I, can I, can I get a motion to approve? Sorry, to approve uh the revised version of MISD Board Policy one thousand and five? No, and then we can amend it.
No, you want to do a motion to amend um, oh.
So you're going to go a motion to approve one zero zero five?
Right.
And then you're going to ask for an amendment after that, is that how you want to do?
Yeah.
The uh motion to overturn?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
And does somebody want to make an amendment?
Motion to amend uh point two to say one board meeting and one instead of first, or as as language could be decided in conjunction with the with the session, you know, for policy. Does that make sense? Is that what, we need to
And then is that
We need to leave that more specific up there. Motion, sorry, how specific, okay. So, motion to amend the language of point two, two.
E two.
Yeah. Instead of to say one board meeting a month instead of first regulation board meeting. Or at least one board, at least, at least one board meeting a month.
Yes.
Also, this is a session. Is there a second for that? Okay, so can we vote, sorry, I'm a little rusty here, can we vote on that amendment? We can vote on the amendment first. Are there other, I guess we vote on that amendment before anybody makes any other. So, all in favor of that amendment to this piece, um uh say ayes, students? And reverse. Okay, so that is, that is two guesses and then five guesses. Two zero, no, oh, sorry, you did not, sorry, all opposed. No. Oh, sorry. One or two others ever? Missed the days of of Zoom whenever you like had their hands up, it was like, perjury, same thing, okay. Any extensions? No, okay, so two zero students, four to one days today's board. Okay, that amendment passes. Are there any other amendments that anyone wants to propose? No. Okay, then do we want to um, can I get a motion on the overall policy?
I move uh approve board policy one zero zero five as amended.
Second. Okay. All in favor of approving board policy one zero zero five as amended? Students? Board members?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Right.
Let us two, two students in favor, four board members in favor, one opposed.
So what we will do is we'll make those updates, and then I'll work with the two of you on the updates that we'll want to make to the procedure on twelve fifty, so we'll work on that, and then we'll bring it up.
Uh, next up, we have board policy one thousand and three. Oh, sorry, recognize, that sounds like that a lot, recognize these?
I got it. And just, they're a big group, so it's gonna be standing. Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, and I don't know, I, I bet it's um, just a little I mean, where we think he does.
Hey, how are you?
Here's why stand up against the table, we're giving credit. The girls utilize too much space, everybody, where's the voice? We're usually a little more organized than this, sorry.
We're usually a little more organized than this, sorry.
Awesome. Well, this group of individuals achieved something that I think coaches dream about, athletes dream about, and especially when you're running or when you are in an event where you're competing on the same day, the same location, to be able to bring home two state championships for both the boys and the girls from one high school. I don't know if that's ever been done in the state of Washington, but if it's done, it is extremely rare. And I remember some of you here last year talking about goals that you had and hopes and dreams, and there were some things that you accomplished, but there were some things that were left unaccomplished last year and coming home state champions, both boys and girls. We couldn't be prouder. A couple of additional highlights. Owen Powell and Sophia Rodriguez are defending champions. Both won state championship last year and defended their titles again this year. Victoria Rodriguez finished third in the girls' race. Junior Bodie Thomas placed fifth in the boys' race. And like golf, you're trying to get the lowest scores. And once again, we were able to do that, so I'm going to turn it over to our coaches. I'll start with Coach Empy to talk a little bit more about these teams, but having been on, been very close to doing something myself in high school but falling short, leave a lot of disappointment. So you did something that I wasn't able to do and, but I'm the superintendent of the school district. So Susan.
Okay, so I, I will say being a proud coach is the understatement of the year. This was an amazing accomplishment, and there have been a couple teams in the state of Washington that have won both the boys and the girls' team titles. There's never been a school that has won both the boys and the girls' team titles and the individual title, so that was amazing. And I want to say from the boys' standpoint, since there's two teams, I'm hoping I can talk to Lauren. From the boys' standpoint, it was a really exciting win because we have not won a team title since nineteen sixty-three. So you look in the gym and you look at the banners and there was a big, there's a big blank space for that, and it'll be so exciting to be able to hang up a banner. And these boys worked really, really hard from the day that school got out in June. They have been, and this goes for the girls' team too, they have been working really, really hard, so it's super exciting to see something like this happen. The difference between this year and last year, and there's no shame in what happened last year, we were so excited to get both teams to state. It was awesome. The girls finished seventh, boys finished eighth. But the difference this year was we had Owen, we had Bodie, and we had Matthew all in the top twelve. And there's no other schools that had three people in the top twelve, so they were both last year and this year that good. Where we were different this year was our depth was incredible, and we had game changers in Charlie Staden Smith and Connor Ward being the number four and the number five on cross country teams is huge. That is where all the points are, and like you mentioned, it's the low scores that, that win. So by having low scores in number four and number five, Charlie and Connor, Connor was, I think, thirtieth. That's amazing. So even when you take Owen's score out, our boys' team would have won. They were that dominant, so it was a really exciting, really, really exciting day. And then number six and seven, the way it works is five score on a cross country team, and number six and number seven are insurance, so like they can bump down other scores, but they, and they also are relied on for the tiebreakers, and then also if your number five doesn't have a good day, they're right there as insurance. So number six and number seven are really important too, but it's the five that score. So the boys dominated. It was, it was awesome. And so super proud of them. The girls equally proud of, they had not won a state title since two thousand and eight, so obviously a little more, a little fresher than nineteen sixty-three. But that was equally exciting, and again, Sophie and Victoria scoring as few points as they did, like they did last year, was incredible. But where we ends up being the really good team was you look at number three, number four, and number five. And number three and four typically this year for us were two freshmen, Ella Zhang and Lauren Malusak, and they ran with no fear. You get to a state competition and it can be for freshmen especially really nerve wracking, and those girls were great for us all season long. And by the girls' team won by one point, it was a nail biter of a, of a race for them. And there are several different scenarios where if things had finished differently, we would not have won. Lauren held off a girl from Blanchett. If she had not done that, we would have tied, and the way scoring works is we would have lost Blanchett from the tiebreaker. Ella didn't have her best race of the season, but still finished really, really well and held off a girl by point one second had she not done that. Also, there would have been a point, and then Katie Culpa, who all season long was our number five, but chose to have the race of her life at state, finished number four. In the last mile, she passed eighteen people, and keep in mind, each person counts as one point. So she single-handedly helped make the, the girls win. So it was incredible, ran a PR, no one thinks that that state course is a PR course, so she was incredible. So I'm just highlighting the five who scored, but like I said, it takes the full team, our six, our seven, and then the eight nines that aren't there on the day. Like it's a whole team that makes the top seven run fast, because if you've got people following you and pushing you and supporting you, it just inspires everybody else. So while there's only fourteen or so of us here today, it really is a full team event, but these are the ones that get the, get the credit for the trophies, so exciting day.
And if I can just chime in real quick on what Susan most it is one of the only sports at the school that's like truly coed. And I just want to kind of shout out to Susan doesn't get nearly enough credit for this. She's, we're one of the only schools that actually runs it as one team. You go to these meets and there's a boys' team with a separate coach and a separate bus, and there's a girls' team with a separate bus and a separate coach. And we're one of the few teams that does it, and Susan is one of the only female coaches that coaches a boys' team and has done incredible stuff, so big shout out to Susan.
But I'm very happy to see you, and I see the whole team training together, so. There's a great vibe, this team, it's
Don't create anything you want to
Oh, just they're laughing at me because I'm a basketball guy. But no, so proud of this group. I've been coaching sports here for twenty years, and just so proud of this group. They're great, their competitiveness, the preparation is incredible. The excellence, I mean, it's a, it's a year to remember.
Students, we'll start with that row. Just introduce yourself, who you are, what year that you are in school, and if there's anything else you want to add, you may, this is your state.
Yeah, I'm Silas Rennie. I'm a junior graduating class of twenty twenty six. And I love cross country. It's really fun to run. I like running a lot, and it's made me have a lot of friends on the same, creating a lot of connections.
I'm Bodie Thomas. I'm a junior. I was really excited for the state meet, and it was super great that we could like call off the wind on the way to the sport through the whole year. It's great.
I'm Matthew Lawrence. I'm a junior, and the work we put in over the summer definitely paid off. I'm super proud of the team and winning state, both guys and the girls.
Oh, I'm Connor Ward. I'm a junior. I don't know why I'm being laughed at. That's good times, good team. That's all I got to say.
I'm Bridge Harry. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Finn Bunker. I'm a sophomore. I'm just here. Have fun. That's all I wanted to say.
I'm Charlie Staden Smith. I'm a junior. Yeah.
I'm Dora Chen, a sophomore.
I'm Ella Zhang. I'm a freshman. And I like just got, got started into running, but I really like it, so I'm excited for like future seasons.
I'm Sophia Rodriguez. I'm a sophomore, and I just wanted to thank everyone who's been with me along the way, and I'm super proud of this whole team.
I'm Lauren Malusak. I'm a freshman, and it's been a fantastic first year and like a great first year in cross country.
I'm Sophia. I'm a senior, and I was fortunate enough to be a captain with all these amazing people right here. And I've seen like the team go from just like being good, but now like really good, and I'm excited to see what like comes next.
Yeah, I'm Katie Culpa. I'm also a senior. And I'm also really excited to see what the team does next, because we're such a young team with our two amazing freshmen and Dora. And yeah, I'm really excited to see where the team goes.
I'm Victoria Rodriguez. I'm a senior, and I had a really good time being a captain this year and being able to connect with everyone on the team. And we had a really good season, so.
I'm Owen. I'm a senior. And I suppose I remember coming here as a sophomore, and I came up here with the guys, the cross team, after they won state, and I remember thinking to myself that there'd be nothing cooler than being able to come up here with the team, and yeah, this is just really cool, and I'm really happy and proud of everybody.
I'm going to turn it over to Ava as a, as a proud sister, but also participant as well, so.
Yeah, I'm so proud of you guys. You just ran like gutsy races and like this team likes to be so right, like the team like was good before, but like this is just like crazy, and it's like more than like anyone could imagine, so. So proud.
We're going to have you come right up. You'll join the board behind me, and we'll do some pictures, all right? Yeah, I'm just looking at everyone there. All right, on me. See everyone, I'm just three, two, one, three, two, one, three, two, one. Come on up there. Three, two, one. All right, thank you guys. Thank you.
But it's the ultimate of what
Doesn't catch flare.
Hey, everybody. I was supposed to tap great, so anybody who mentioned me, this guy's all twelve minutes.
Great.
Oh.
So we are, we are going to say the recognitions and it will spread out full of into his report. So for now, we are going into Board, that's Board Policy 1003, Board Job Description, Discussion of Social Media, Mass Action.
As I've been indicating, just some slight updates to you in the weekly updates. You know, this has been a topic that we've kind of gone back and forth on and where we last left off, there was some court action in California, which was holding up the mass action lawsuit. Now that that's been resolved, the cases are moving forward and so the attorneys from Keller Rohrbach contacted us to let us know kind of where they were with things. So we wanted to reopen that conversation since we kind of put it on pause. I'm going to turn it over to Director Battersby, just to talk a little bit high level about where the case is right now. And what we're looking for tonight is, you know, not a decision or whatnot, but is the board interested in learning more? Is this something that you want the board, President, Vice President, myself to challenger and to go from there? So turn it over to you, Director Battersby.
Yeah, so essentially just by way of reminder, this is a suit that's seeking injunction relief requires social media updates to modify the platforms to mitigate the harm against children. Which could obviously, since we serve children as a K-12 institution, that are impacted. You know, they, there is monetary compensation, which is saw, but it's just secure really resources to address increased student mental health needs caused by the social media use. And there's, I think about eleven, there's four, there's actually five that filed similar things alleging that these companies, platforms contribute to youth mental health crisis by their design, operation with targeted like algorithms and that kind of thing. This particular lawsuit is part of a consolidated multi-district or MBL in the United District Court for the Northern District of California. As Dr. Ruggel shared, Superintendent Ruggel shared, Keller Rohrbach is sort of leading firm in this litigation. And they're representing numerous school districts, including many on the west coast, so they're sort of targeting west coast. And so that's why it would be appropriate for them to reach out to us. I mean, our situation, were we to join, I know there was questions earlier, I think Director Glowitz and Director Lurie regarding sort of what would be the impact on the burden with respect to discovery and that type of thing. And they've sort of, there's this, there's a bellwether trial is what they're calling it, so there's this sort of core group that is taking the lead on the discovery piece, so that even further reduces the burden on other districts such as ourselves because we would not be part of the bellwether trials. So really what we would have to do if we were to pursue this, we'd submit like a short form complaint detailing what our district claims are and our demographics. And then we have to complete a back sheet within 90 days of our filing. Which sort of would provide information on our impact, what students and the costs incurred. And this would really be really, since the cracks of it is the student mental health and what our costs are. So in terms of benefits, it's really looking at, as I understand it and the way it's sort of framed is that it's looking to find accountability for what people believe is wrongdoing or at least to hold social media companies to a higher standard to also bear the burden of safeguarding young people. And it is also the benefit potentially is access to financial resources for school districts and other agencies that serve students. There's obviously potential drawbacks as well, which I think has been talked about, like what are the perception of relationships in our community? What are, what are the oppositions? So there's lots of ways and that's not really for me to do, that's really for the board. So we're here to just say like this, this litigation is back on track in terms of being able to move forward and where do we want to stick? Because the last I knew, we were sort of on pause and I was waiting to be contacted by, by the board, should you want to pursue it further? Should you want to spend time or at least get more information from the leading firm, which is Keller Rohrbach, on what the next steps could be, which would be more in-depth than what I provide here, is what I'm providing is just an overview and my understanding of the case, state by federal direct state for involvement in case.
Can you say a little bit more about the bellwether suit?
Yeah, so that, that is just basically, there's a group of districts that are sort of taking the lead. And so a lot of the discovery, what we relate to that since is a large conglomeration of districts, so that group can take the discovery piece, so provide the resources and information, that's my understanding.
Do you know if there's any like injunction relief that's been proposed right now or would that be come out through discovery and trial? I mean, looking at tobacco, there's a monetary settlement put about like restrictions for marketing, you know, to kids. Is there anything like of that nature in terms of restrictions or use or the, you know, to come at some point?
I, I don't know the specific details, because my general understanding is the hope is to influence the algorithm of what not that targets students in terms of content. Or not, I can say students, but it's not specific students as youth or children in terms of content and the type of information as well as changing algorithms to safeguard students, should there be dangerous content, that's my understanding. So there is a hope for some changing the practices, but I don't know what the specifics are that I, I don't know the details.
Are there questions?
I think it'd be useful to like learn a little more about, like what, like I'm also curious about like if they're going to be keeping like the, if like the social media companies are going to be enacting change if we, if like more districts are on this and like it's successful and it goes through. So I think it'd be useful.
I'd like to learn more. I think, you know, like the question Director Glowitz just asked is, is why we're here. And rather than guessing what the answer is, we can ask correctly, however that's done, I'm, whether it's leadership or not. I defer to others.
Agreed.
So it sounds like we have a consensus for interested in learning more and especially more about like what kinds of injunctions could be, what kinds of injunction relief could be. More recognitions, no public input, do we have any public input? Nope. Okay, we have no public input tonight, so superintendent report.
Going to finish off with just a couple of recognitions, as I stated in my memo to the community, it's kind of nice this year that a lot of our holidays are all matching up. So we'll all be celebrating with friends and family and enjoying time for those who celebrate, for those who don't. We have a two-week break coming up that I know our student reps already gave a nod to of approval. Can't come soon enough probably for you right now, but I certainly wish everyone well during the holidays, including you as a board. I do want to recognize and thank Charmels and Rachel for dinner tonight, as well as Steph Pfeifer and our fabulous group of families who've continued to provide meals for us in our board meetings, very much appreciated, so thank you. And then I also want to just thank Deborah and Dan for their service as President and Vice President. And Deborah kind of, you know, had a truncated first tenure as a president back in the COVID era and then stepped up again to serve the board and the community in the last year. And then Director Glowitz, back to back, he kind of helped the transition from Director De Souza and then to Director Lurie. And you know, that's a lot of, that's two years of a lot of extra meetings and time spent. So I just want to thank both of you for your leadership and service.
Thank you.
With that, a couple of just aspects to my report. One, we can return to it towards the end of the meeting, but I mentioned that, you know, for raise to you in the update last week, that you had an interest in looking at the sustainability and environmental stewardship resolution that was passed. And so you can discuss that again later on during updates, but just whether or not you want to revisit that and what that would look like. And then Director Lurie, you had mentioned, and again, we can do this later, but it was on my notes as well, which is adjusting the board time or having a recess in the midst of our next board meeting, so that you can go up and attend the Islander for a night, or the future Islander Night rather, at the high school. And then lastly, I was going to hold off on this actually until the January meeting, but really, but I upped it to tonight's meeting. And so if you'll go ahead and pull that up, I want to give you an open enrollment update and invite Erin Miller up to the desk here. The reason is, we saw an uptick in, actually it's back to superintendent report, yep, there it is. We saw an uptick in requests for open enrollment recently and that's because Bellevue announced their opening. So Bellevue School District, and they do theirs a little differently, they actually have a start and then a cutoff date for theirs. And we're, we suspect, and talking to Michelle, that some of that was because people are now wondering, because you can only apply for one. You can't put your name in the hat for five or six different districts. And so we started getting a lot of inquiries, so we decided to go ahead and up this. Some of it is repeat from our conversation that we had back in November. But I had come to you with kind of a first look at the November meeting, would like to give you an update tonight. And then my goal would be to come forward with a formal recommendation to the board meeting. And then when you want to consider it or what you want to do, that is up to you, I don't want to presuppose. But so I just started kind of listing out future board members there. Just a quick update of where we are and kind of, I think a very important graph for us as staff and administrators to be paying attention to, as we start thinking projections. You know, I think we need to take a look at the history and see what we saw for total enrollment coming in versus students going out. We certainly wouldn't want to overload a certain grade level and so we'll be paying close attention to our historical numbers. A reminder on kind of where the open enrollment came in, was fairly evenly spread from eighth to tenth. And then if you put eleventh and twelfth together, but fewer students obviously there. One of the questions that you had asked, I think in November was, you know, are, what are, how are students accessing services? Especially from the students who came into the school district. And we are, help me out, Director Bolivar, what is our percent right now, special education, is it eleven or ten?
I think it's twelve, close to twelve percent.
It's north of ten. And our students who are receiving services is less than 10% of the 44. So that was a question you had asked from there. And then I always like to remind our community more than you as a board, since you're well aware of it, but we do have a number of staff. Our community more than you as a board, since you're well aware of it, but um we do have a number of staff members who bring their children here as well as um the city uh staff as well. So we've been talking a little bit about the open enrollment impacts. Um, and what did we see from the twenty-four, twenty-five open enrollment? That would be for this current year. Um, we certainly saw an increase beyond projection. Uh, we saw, we projected three thousand eight hundred fifteen students, I believe, Director Solomon, is that what it is? Thirty-eight fifteen was the projection. Um, we came in, um, obviously you've seen in recent uh reports, um thirty-niney, thirty-niney plus. It's thirty-nine oh four, thirty-nine oh four, no, even better. Um. And so if you take forty-four off of that, we still would have been above projection. I think that's a great thing. Um, as we start to think about rebuilding fund balances, we think about programs and opportunities for students. Uh, but I think we were also helped with our open enrollment. You've had some questions around, you know, those open enrollments, what was kind of the impact? And so we have been starting to pull. Um, class rosters and course enrollment to whatnot. And I just wanted to give um. Uh, Principal slash Director Miller a chance just to talk a little bit about what he's seeing as a principal. And HR lens around the types of courses and and what might have been buoyed up or impacted by open enrollment.
Yeah, so one of the things that that any principals, they're figuring out their main schedule, just has to figure out numbers of sections, numbers of courses, and then really make a determination about. What's what's a number of kids that allows you to run a course or is not not run a course? And and balance that with the amount of FTE you're given at a building level. And. We did a little dive on kind of the high school and some of the courses that that we know. That they had to make a determination on, yes or no. And with the additional funds. Through the generated through the students from open enrollment, uh, we were able to maintain staffing that that we otherwise. Might have had to cut and therefore maintain some courses that um. Might not have been able to run without open enrollment. So really, i- in general terms, we were at the high school able to run. Many uh upper language, upper level language courses, some of those uh French three, French four, Spanish three, some of the AP or college things. Um, those high level French courses and other languages. Um, in addition. We were able to continue or the high schools able to give you a lot of AP honors courses, some of those courses that um. Are really near and dear to a lot of our kids and want to excel in certain areas and have a passion for certain areas. So the AP honors and AP honors courses were some of that. And then also um STEAM courses, use some music, some art, some radio. Um, robotics, lots of different things there that you that principals have to make determination on. If I have eighteen kids. Nineteen kids, twenty kids, is that enough to run a course? And so with that extra kids and extra funding, the determination in a lot of cases was yes, we're able to run that course. So in addition to to those, we also were able to at the high school offer some more intervention courses. Students that might need what they call directed studies, which is kind of helping kids manage executive function, manage their their day, manage their assignments. Um, those are able to run where we might not have been able to have the funding for that. Um, there's some intervention math courses that are running a little bit lower than we typically wo- would. Um, just because me, those students need some specific intervention and a little bit smaller class size, a little bit more support. So I think. Um, it has definitely been beneficial. It's allowed administrators to make some calls on the yes side. Where they might have had to make some calls on the no side if if the money um wasn't there and they have to decide between. Two classes, we're able to make some good decisions. So I think those are some um positives. For open enrollment and it comes to some considerations for for the future.
How about IMS?
At IMS, um, we only had ten kids versus thirty-two at the um. At the high school, pretty much it was just being able, you know, ten kids is about about. Half the teacher, we were able to keep a couple of things, nothing in the term, you know, when you have ten kids versus thirty, thirty-two kids, nine, whatever, we had nine kids, whatever that may be. Um, just allow us to maintain some staffing. Um. Maybe fill up some of our elective classes, so we will be able to make um some some positive choices there, but the impact was a lot less.
Um, at some point, are we gonna see? A list of the course offering at the high school and the number of students. It's something I wanted last year. And you know, you give examples such as some of the honors courses and STEAM. And I guess. For whatever reason, maybe there's a magical number of fourteen hundred, but there's other districts. Uh, that have other schools that offer many of these courses with enrollment that's dramatically lower than fourteen hundred. So I. I don't necessarily understand why it's a given that particular courses might be cut if enrollment falls behind. A certain threshold amount without seeing the course catalog and the number of students that take that.
I think one of the things that um is important is it's not necessarily cutting the whole course and, you know. We have, we run the sheets and we're looking at them all the time. It's not always, uh, I think it's a great question. It's not always about cutting the course and not running it. It's being able to add another course or not having to say, well. Juniors, you're not gonna be able to take this course next year, only seniors. Um, we can run a course that's smaller. So an example, um. If I look up here, like a rate advanced radio broadcasting. We have one class that we filled up with thirty, but we have fifteen more kids that really wanted to take it. And so we're oftentimes faced with, can we run a class with fifteen? Um, and if not, those fifteen will have to go somewhere else. And so the flexibility to be able to run some of these classes at lower numbers, so it wouldn't have been eliminating it. But fifteen more kids are able to take a class that we may not have before. Um, and while. Eight, while, you know, forty kids doesn't solve all of these challenges and it isn't the reason why for all of these. It's a reason for some of it. We added an AP um Jamie Helpout, AP English Lit. I think it was a class at the very end of the summer that we added back into the system. Um, and that was able to make sure that other students could, that we didn't have seniors who weren't getting their first choice in English. So. You're absolutely right. It's not about courses absolutely being cut, but it is about more kids having opportunity because you can run a smaller class.
And I and I would also add to that, Fred, that I think one of the the things just pretty amazing about Mercer High School is the breadth of courses. And the more courses you offer, the less flexibility there, the more. The more that kids are diluted because they're taking so many different of the offerings. And so sometimes that does cause a bit of a challenge. And. I think that's one of the things that that you all and the students benefit from is being able to take some of these amazing courses that. That may or may not be offered in other places, but ultimately that does cause a challenge because you're diluting the number of kids that can take those courses. So.
Does that help on that part of it as far as not eliminating a class, but more access to it?
Not really. And I'd like to see the the list of courses across.
And like in actual sizes are.
And the actual numbers of each.
Is that is that something like the board as a whole is interested in?
I mean, what would be the purpose of giving that information, I guess?
Well, because. My understanding is open enrollment is to order, is enabled to order, to maintain a certain course catalog. I think a basic question that flows from that is what is the course catalog and the number of students that are taken? So we can see. The spectrum of class sizes. My understanding is there's a wide spectrum. Certain classes are closer to thirty students, certain are fifteen. Those are all decisions that are made that then. You know, those are decisions. So.
I guess I think of it as like, that's pretty granular and pretty like operations focused. And like, I trust our administrators to. Like do the work and like report on it to us. Like, I don't personally need to go over. A list of high school classes and okay, every single like number of enrollment and make my uninformed. You know, assumptions about why a class is a certain size, so.
I guess I just see things differently. It seems that when it comes to open enrollment, there's certain courses that we mentioned over and over again as being. Perhaps the chopping block, we don't do open enrollment. Without diving into that information. I'm not able to say one way or the other, whether I agree with that assessment.
So my question is, is that uh an easy, like would it add a lot of time for your staff to get that information? Or if it's a very easy question to get that?
We pulled it lots of different ways. Um, we were just looking at it tonight. And so, you know, we pulled this because I knew you had questions and an interest in this. Um, so that I could answer questions like that, because we do have a wide range of. Students enrolled in classes. We have like a human geo class where we have two sections of thirty-two. And then we have one of eighteen. And that one of eighteen is likely because we're able to move. So you do see discrepancies. I I. You know, they do the best they can to even a mouth, but sometimes. Those thirty-two kids want, we couldn't make it exactly even between all three, because then they couldn't have taken their other elective or they couldn't have taken. This course. So that's the challenges that we run into. We don't love it when we have thirty in one class and only fifteen in another. But that's fifteen kids who get to take a class. So that that's why we pulled this. So it's not hard. That's what we've been working on.
My 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 opinion is that I I see and I trust what you're saying and I I would see it when I'm being operational. And also somebody that is both deep into the data and helps me to the, basically the picture, like if there's something that's not adding extra work to the, like having the provision doesn't hurt. It's one of the things that it's like, is it relevant, that's that's easy to have? And then the the answer, the question is answered.
I I I I think that are actually drawbacks. And now. Anyone can do a public record request and they would get the enrollment. And and I assume that if they ask for class size, as long as the number is big enough. Um. Seeing numbers like that is beyond the layperson's expertise. So there's all these reasons of why that, you know, a few of probably hundreds of reasons and. We know our community and people are gonna go and then nitpick and then make up reasons and then, you know. Have hypotheses of why things are happening, they are, why they are. I think that um, you know, this is so squarely in operations. It's beyond our purview and um it, I'm not interested. I I think it could cause harm as well. Um, I think that if we um, I, you know, we've heard the explanation of why classes are different sizes. Um, you know, I think for as for staff, you know, if it's the same teacher that's teaching the three sections, it's still the same total number of students. So. So their work wise isn't impacted. Um, of course, we like. Fewer and you know, some people might like a bigger class. I mean, who knows, right? But um. It's not like we're talking about between, you know, fifteen to a hundred. Um, these, these are the normal fluctuations, you know, I assume. You know, the bigger classes, if if it conflicts with band, um, it's gonna have fewer students in it because. And and then some of the ones that aren't the band section, the band period are in another one. So that's just an example, because it's a big class. Um, I. I think it's, I think it's, we we might have different opinions on things, but our role as a board is policy, not operations. And unless there's a, there's a reason to provide it for policy, I I'm opposed to it.
I also think it sounds like it's not hard for the district to provide that basic information to us, but I don't want to put. Our administrators in the position of then having to defend every single class, like allocation decision and to have like. Are we gonna all sit here and go through it one class at a time? I mean, that's a lot of classes, right? I'd be like, well, and what about this one? And why is this three classes instead of two? And would this hypothetically be this other, like, I'm also.
From my understanding, and and I could very well be wrong, um. The open enrollment is also like, it's just sort of a general like addition of the FTE funds to our school that we're able to make these decisions. So it's not like. Billy from Bellevue was going to take this thing that class. So it's safe. It's more like Billy's. Amount of money is pouring into the system and so we're able to have this flexibility. So I'm not sure really of the utility of that sort of granular information. Um. You know, for, because again, for the policymaking point of view, because I think that it's also, it's it's the money that comes to the student, not the actual like physical student, right?
Yeah, well, Fred and I talked today and you're exactly right. We we could, that the time that took me apart would be to say, what, where did? All the thirty thirty kids at the Mercer High School, what class did they enroll in? Did they quote unquote save any classes by making it instead of? Sixteen now is twenty and therefore yay, we saved it. But the funding that comes with that was what allows us to make some decisions, as I said before, that. That maybe we would have had to say no to, whatever that may be, but we were able to say yes to because of the money, not that this kid enrolled in this particular class.
Jamie want to add something as a high school.
I just think something to keep in mind too is as um open enrollment progressed during the spring into the summer, we were watching every single class, so every section of every class of every grade. And the exact numbers. And so like Aaron at the middle school, he was saying like, okay, I've got room in this particular class. Um, at the high school, it was, we got to a point for eleventh grade where we had no more advanced courses. So you could not take uh the AP block. And so as people were applying, we would say, hey, we get their transcripts, we see what it's been before, ensuring that there's no deficiencies and credit. Uh, recovery needed, but also saying, it looks like you've been on an advanced track. We want you to know that at this point in time, our classes are are maxed. We are not looking to add another section. We didn't have any, you know. Class of fifteen where we needed one or two more. And then people were making an informed decision of like, yes, I want to continue with my application. I'm okay going into. Uh, a non honors block or a non AP block. Um, but we are like at the school level and the people who are registering students and assigning them courses, like. It is at such a granular level, every decision is looking at, is there space? Can we add them? Do you, is it, do we have something that we didn't offer them?
And Jamie, I think that's a good point. And adding to that, we actually closed a couple of grades faster than others, right? I think eighth and.
Eighth and eleventh.
Close sooner.
And then we then we paused, there was a little bit of wiggle room and we said, okay, well, we have room for eleven, but we don't have room in these two electives. And so. You know, it was communicating communicating with families as they were applying to say, you know, as long as you're coming in, eyes wide open. That this is what's available, we have got room for you.
Because we were also holding back space for any new families enrolling. So we weren't, in some classes, we weren't, if we weren't necessarily up against thirty-four, thirty-two. We were holding back saying, we're gonna get more enrollment. So that families who are.
From a, from a a feel good standpoint, you you would hate to fill up all your class and then somebody who moves here. All of a sudden, there isn't. So there was a little bit of buffer built into.
Jamie, can you just remind us too quickly on when you're reviewing applications uh with Michelle? What are the reasons for, or minus reasons for denial?
So uh discipline, so previous disciplinary issues, um chronic absenteeism. So if somebody has has uh. Had attendance issues in the past, we are not going to dedicate our resources to try to get them because. Likely it's gonna be more challenging for them to get here. Um, and then uh credit deficiencies. So if they previously didn't earn credits or pass credits and they've got to. Access summer school, they've got it, we've got to ensure they get a separate period day um and make up credits. Those would be reasons, just because those require additional resources.
And how many? Denials did you process or whatnot? Just roughly, do you remember?
Hmm. Based on those reasons. I think for sure fewer than ten, probably five or six.
And we saw, I saw two come through um. Appeals to me, one dropped their appeal and the other one I heard all the way through uh on that. So there's something to process on that. Sorry to take you away from that, but I, there was all these other.
I was, I I, the the three reasons since I create deficiency, the chronic absenteeism, what the other one?
Discipline, okay. And it's not just any discipline, it has to be.
Reflection time for phone violations.
I mean, what else?
Um, just a reminder here, um, kind of my thinking here with fifth grade IMS, Mercer High School kind of enrollment. Um, I'm not thinking, uh, just as I wasn't a month ago, uh, anything with elementary, trying to really think and work with the principals. Um, as uh Aaron mentioned, the two of us talked a little bit today. Um. Jamie, Nick and myself talked a little bit yesterday and I'm meeting with uh Nick again tomorrow, but um as we start to look at. You know, with fifth graders are gonna roll up, you know, what might we be thinking for that? And I know that uh right hand column doesn't add to thirty or forty exactly. Um, but I think that speaks to, you know, we're, you know, students are coming in and out, but. Um, the reason why we kind of came up with that is, I think the IMS class size targets, as Aaron and I spoke, was, you know, right around three hundred fifteen, three hundred twenty. That keeps us well over the one thousand um student capacity that we've been talking about. Um, maintains the current complement of electives. Holds our courses and staffing fairly steady, um creates predictability. And then for the high school is trying to get those class sizes right around three hundred fifty. Um, and many of the reasons are the same. So that's where kind of these numbers start to come from. They don't get us exactly to where we need to be. But I think if we can kind of get closer to this, it helps out Director Sullivan and their team uh as they're coming up with uh projections. And my goal, as I said last year, is really to try to create some um stability and sustainability. Within our system, which then creates predictability, not only for our students, but our staff um as well. So that's kind of where I'm. So that's kind of where, um, what I'm thinking right now. Um, like I said, I was gonna wait until January to come to you, but, um, with that uptick that Michelle having on, I think it was yesterday evening. Um, we decided to, um, go ahead and we'd already been pulling and working on this, but we accelerated it a little bit. Anything else from your side in terms of projections or impacts or some of that?
I have a question. It's fascinating that up to, because I've had two different, from very different places texts this week on is Mercer Island open? And people in the community asking, I was actually gonna ask you about it. Um, but, uh, you know, so the, the word is out there, but it's interesting to hear about all of you. Um, if a student wants to apply now, are they, and there's a spot in that grade, is there, are they still able to do that? And we're talking about for twenty four, five, twenty-six school year? Like, i- if, if we make any changes, I guess just to, just to be able to tell, like, answer the question, are we open currently?
Um, uh, there's, actually, I'm just gonna turn it over to our staff because they're the ones who work on this all the time and um, I have that. Erin, you wanna start and then we'll work around?
Yeah, I just wanna emphasize that whether we're open or closed, students can always submit an application for a choice transfer. So that that's irrelevant. So they're always welcome to apply. It's just, and we have specific categories they can go through. So they're always welcome to apply. I just wanna make sure that's on record and that it's very clear to everyone.
Uh, so Michelle and I meet every Monday to talk about, um, choice transfers. Um, we have not had a new choice transfer for this school year, um, in the last So, um, because unlike Velby, we don't have a hard and fast deadline. We have not said we are open until this date and then we close and then we open again on this date. Um, we are operating under being open until we hear that classes are full. So we've not, uh, received or accepted any eighth graders since the point in time when Erin in the middle school said we've reached our capacity. Uh, so if somebody were to reach out, we'll, we will say there's not space. Uh, we always check with the registrar, we see if numbers have changed. If there's opening, we would process, but that's not been the case. Uh, we will have to figure out which grade this student who recently applied yesterday. Um, but because we don't close our open enrollment, um, we would likely process and consider it if they meet the criteria, um, then allow them in if there were space, no academic issues, no attendance issues or discipline issues.
So if the board in like January, February is like no more open enrollment, then we would close. For the sort of general open enrollment.
We would always continue, uh, to reiterate what Erin said. Uh, we will always accept them. And the reason why we keep over emphasizing that is we actually had a finding from OSPI in twenty twelve or thirteen?
Twenty thirteen?
Twenty thirteen. Um, and we've lost on a technicality because of the way we phrased us being closed. Districts always have to consider. There are then reasons that you can say no, um, but we always have to consider. So that's why you hear us being a little more specific about it.
I will also, um, say that one thing that, that we hear at the building level around and might be why you're seeing an uptick on your end is that a lot of people are considering applications for other places. And this, I think right after New Year's is about when, when those things are due. So people are starting to explore their options right now.
End of January, beginning of February.
Do we, are there any, um, strong, I mean, I've heard great things about open enrollment from students and staff and community and family, um, parents. Um, are there, I have not heard a negative. Are there any widespread negative, uh, concerns?
Not that have been launched or necessarily to me. I've had some conversations around, um, athletics and whether or not some students are here with athletics and, um, some of the ones that they were pointing to were actually students who have moved here to the island. These were not open enrollments. Um, but that was the only thing. Staff, I don't know if you're hearing at the building or district level.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't received any complaints.
I think the only thing I would say is just like any, any student transferring systems, whether it's from one public school or another, from a private school, sometimes there's a little bit of disconnect on old system versus new. What is a a math curriculum for seventh grade in place X versus Y? Is it harder, that more challenging there than it is here or vice versa? So I think, but that's, that would be with a student that moves on with the island too. So I don't, you're not much to it.
Yes, Erin, that reminds me, um, this is not, again, not specific to students who came from choice, but just trying to figure out how to better identify early on students, um, and where they are in different curricula as they come to us from around the world, around the country, um, and even around the state. Um, so whether that's from choice or from moving here, um, I know the high school is actively looking at tools to help identify and, um, provide some data to teachers early on. Instead of having to wait a few months at a school, get to that first quarter and say, hey, I feel like we need to try some interventions here, trying to get those, um, you know, as students move, as students join, et cetera.
Do we do any placement exams for anyone?
No, but we are, we're looking at it.
At, at IMS, we do a math placement exam because there is such a different, uh, people call different classes different things, uh, some dance tracks with different in different places. So we do do a placement test with just math. And then we have, uh, and then we talked about it before, we have I reading that we do fairly early in the year to give some other doubt.
I mean, I assume the biggest issues are math and world language.
Yeah, but there's also, um, you know, depending on standards and what people are, are teaching to and the levels. You know, because like say that English, um, it's nine, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and there's big gaps. Um, and our students in eighth grade are working on some, some things that are above eighth grade. And so as you, which are filling it up, that gap grows. And so if you've come from another system and you're in English nine, um, you might not be where are those who've been through the entire system. So it's just trying to identify and ensure that they're getting the appropriate class placements, supports, et cetera.
Yeah, I've heard from my English teacher, Mr. Goldinger, actually, he was telling me how he has some students that are here on open enrollment and the expectations are a lot different for a lot of the students. And so he used to work extra hard to like communicate with those students. He's like, English can be very different, like learning completely different kinds of books, especially like school districts. Often like the English departments work together to make it like a, oh, K through twelve kind of process, right? Like each, each step is like a little bit higher. And so like, it kind of, um, offsets that when the student moves to district stuff.
Yeah. So, I know we can't like take any action today on it, but I'm wondering, do we really need two more meetings or do we make a decision for next year? Because it would be really nice to have an answer like middle of January because of when the private school applications are due. Like if we wanna be kind of competitive with private schools.
Can I, yeah, I also just add, like, people are absolutely backed on the calendar. So we're beholden to a forty-five day response period. So if they apply, we have forty-five days to respond. Automatically on the forty-fifth day, if we've not determined whether or not we are considering them, um, the review and then likely to deny. Um, and so people are gaming that system. They're like, well, when, when is that word meeting gonna be? And when might I be able to apply? Because I wanna get first in line. Uh, so just for what it's worth, people are already calling and working the calendar.
It's really, I think, what's that? January sixteenth is the next board meeting. That is really up to you on terms of consideration timeline. And, and I know that when I had talked to you in November, I was talking about the January meetings, which is why since I moved it up, um, you know, I didn't wanna presuppose that you wanna make decisions. So that's really up to you as a board. Um, I, like I said, by the sixteenth, I can come with a formal recommendation. Any information that you need to help you make the decision, um, we're happy to work with you.
I would just say that, that, that this is when I'm explaining to people what, you know, what this school board does or people are like, what do you do and whatever? And this is something that I hold as an example. Like, I feel like, like, you know, we've set this policy of open enrollment and I think that you really, um, like implemented the policy in a sort of thoughtful manner that maximizes like our, optimizes like the school and prioritizes Mercer Island students at the same time, while, you know, doing what we need to do to make our school run at sort of like best capacity. And that, sort of that line between like, we set the policy and now you've implemented it for us and then we, you know, see how it's going and we wanna, you know, say that it's implemented in the way that we thought it would be or we have questions about how it was going, whatever. But, um, I just wanted to say that this is, to me, this is sort of an exemplar of, of like what we would do at the board, like how it should work, maybe. Um, of, you know, we want something done and you guys do it. And it seems to be like done in such a, in such a thoughtful and thorough way that it really makes it easy to say, you know, that we trust in the decisions that we made. Does that make sense?
Is, is there interest, uh, among the board members in, um, either in like having the formal recommendation of January sixteenth and then having board discussion and a decision on January thirtieth?
I'm, I'm, I mean, assuming the recommendation is gonna come from within the chart, um,
Yes.
The numbers, I, I, assuming it's not gonna be like outside of that. Um, and without hearing any negatives, um, from open enrollment, I am perfectly fine, um, the, having January sixteen being presented and then the board have the opportunity to approve it then and there. Uh, we know what's coming. We have the opportunity to ask questions. And if we still have questions, then we don't have to vote on it that day. We can bump it to a second reading, um, or for a vote at the end of the month. But, um, you know, I'm not hearing, I, 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 I just don't know, like what Jody was just saying. Like, we worked really hard on the whys. And, and I think that the, the whys haven't changed and it's the hows that have changed. Um, and I'm perfectly comfortable leaving that to our superintendent to do the how. Um, and, and like I said, I don't think the why has changed. So, um, I mean, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm, I mean, I know the board, we have, in our policy, the board has to approve it, the, uh, every year. Um, or, you know, choose to follow the, the superintendent's recommendation. I don't anticipate much more of a discussion unless there's an issue that comes up that we haven't discussed.
Is there anyone who's not comfortable with that timeline?
We will come forward.
Jamie's like, maybe.
Full governance process monitoring, board policy eighteen hundred OE three of, of community members.
Okay, um, I'm gonna actually turn it over to Director Williams to, uh, take it from here. We have back-to-back OEs tonight to, um, review. And so I'll turn it over to you, Noah.
Yeah, so this one is, um, I actually just So only two really goes, uh, into discipline and sort of what the disciplinary trends have been in the district. And as you can see by the right, if you scroll down. He'll get this.
Yeah.
Uh, so you can see over the past five years, we've seen a significant reduction in sort of the disciplinary incidents that resulted in exclusions, which demonstrates that sort of a progress that we take in management and the policy enforcement. It is necessary to highlight that there are also changes in legislation, specifically how spelled fifteen forty-one, which was passed in twenty sixteen, but wasn't implemented until twenty nineteen, which encourages the use of sort of restorative practices, something that we, I think, did a pretty good job with as opposed to, um, long-term suspensions and exclusion, exclusions and expulsions. So while those things still happen, they are, uh, discouraged and happen less frequently. So you can see, continue to see a decline as last year, we are doing a five-year look back. We used to just do one the board wanted a larger trend. Um, so we have continued with that process. Um, sort of the key statistics is, um, in that five-year span, we dropped from a hundred fifty-eight instances, instances um, of offenses down to, I think it was a hundred and six, is that right? Yeah, sorry. Um, I can't see that far. So it's about a third of a, uh, a, a reduction of about a third, which is significant. Um, some of that may be because of just sort of as years fall off, we have, but we're not, we have this sort of COVID times where there's a lot of, there are very few instances of harassment because kids weren't together. And there weren't exclus, what were we excluding them from? They were pretty out of school, right? Uh, but that was true for last year. So this is a real reduction, I think. So I just wanna highlight that. But as we look in years out, you are likely going to see an increase, which is gonna be a bit false. So I just wanna remind you of that as we go through this process in the years to come. Cause I'm sure I'll be here next year and here after talking about this. Um, but we have sort of the, the COVID period, which is like a year and a half, two-year period where they're artificially deflated. Um, fighting this unsafe behaviors decreased from thirty to twenty-six incidents. Um, it was nice to see our alcohol offensive fall, as well as our tobacco violations fell precipitously from twenty-one to three, uh, which I think is really impactful. And I sit on the Healthy Youth Coalition and that was, that's been sort of a alcohol use and the use of tobacco, um, and tobacco products has been a focus point. And some of the data out of you, have a chance to see it, is, is pretty positive about our kids' use of substances on the island. Um, so that's good. The, um, the, the area of con- concern is that males continue to be overrepresented in this. The other piece of it is that we have, we did see an increase from ten to fourteen um, in our harassment incidents, which can be very damaging. And so that's something that we would wanna focus on in terms of our intervention and prevention and see if there's any trends there or if there's specific things that we can do to prevent that. Cause ultimately we wanna stay inclusive, um, environment for all students and harassment can be pretty damaging. So.
How would, um, how would like the anti-Semitic writing in the bathroom last year? It, the perpetrator wasn't caught, it can't go down as disciplined and yet the impact is enormous. Like, is, is this, that's not from fear because it's not discipline?
Correct. So that wouldn't be captured. It's something that we're acutely aware of, but that wouldn't be captured. Typically, we are pretty good at identifying um, and, and to be, give credit where credit's due, not only to our administrators who have really good relation, and teachers and parent educators. Like our staff have a really good relationship with our kids. Um, and so are able to get information um, from kids or kids or couples sharing it because they're concerned about their fellow students. Like they don't want to see their students, their peers being harmed by other students. And often they worry about the aggressors in this situation as well, concern that the behavior may be a sign of mental health concerns. Like ultimately, I think our kids care about each other and because they develop positive relationships with our staff, that they're willing to share that information because they just want our community to get better together. Um, so I do wanna give credit to that. So we're typically able to identify people and in the instances we can't, um, we do the best that we can to be um, to engage in, in sort of healing, um, without an identified aggressor. Does that make sense?
Can I ask about lower down on that, on that slide, um, on that page, uh, school year exclusions by gender? Um, is that individual instances of exclusions? Like if you had a male kid get excluded repeatedly, would those add up to that column, which is all filled?
Correct.
It's not like an individual, we're not counting the individuals who've been excluded.
Correct, it's the instances. Yeah, exactly. So for example, if it could be, if we had a, you know, the same male could be excluded all of those times, it could be one human.
Right.
But representing that be a higher number. That's not the case, but I think that could be.
And, and all of these numbers cover all three levels of.
Correct. Although I, I do wanna highlight that there are certain exclusions that aren't available to us other than laws for our youngest students. Other, other question? But I can't highlight enough, like we have really good kids here. Not saying that other places don't, but I'm just daily um, impressed by our student population and the staff that work with them. And I'm proud to be a member of this community and if I get to go there, so.
I, I have kind of a general question, um, and it's okay to kind of defer it or have a discussion other time. Um, you know, as, as legislatively, we can no longer expel. Um, and so And so like there's the emergency expulsion, then the in-house and the short term and the long term, but, but not expulsions like there used to be in the day. Do we, like, is there at some point, would it be useful to have a conversation about like, how is that going? Is that something we ever want to be advocating toward legislature about in terms of legally and policy-wise? You know, I see these numbers and it doesn't, you know, I, I'm not raising any red flags, but, um, I mean, are, are, are you feeling like your staff has the tools they need to keep our kids safe? Whether it's perpetrator or victim or bystander? Or do you feel like there's something that we could be advocating for that could assist with that?
I would say that you have a similar line of inquiry as a board. You have a similar line of inquiry around when we have a Title IX complaint or something, how do we investigate things? And I think that was an interest that possibly put onto the January 23rd study session. I would love to just kind of put a pin in that and say, if that's of interest, let's add that. Because I would want to bring in some of our administrators and, and have a really healthy discussion about that. I think me personally, um, from my seat as, you know, a principal, and then laws have changed since I was a principal to where I am now. And sometimes I'm in the hearings with some students. Um, I think there are some things that we don't have as readily available to us that we may have used to have. And, and I think some staff are frustrated. I get frustrated sometimes, but in other times, it's a really good thing of what we're doing, which is trying not to remove kids from class. Um, because there's not a lot of great research around the scared straight model, um, either. So, um, if that's an interest, that, that would be a great conversation. And we have a lot of great people that I think we could add texture to that conversation, but I would love to.
Be interested in that? Anything else?
Maybe.
Maybe, maybe. And I'm not saying it's at the top of the list, this just brings it up for me that. So if, if it's not a great time, I'm totally fine with that. I'm just, it's just a question, happy to learn more and it's not something I need to learn more about right now.
I think that, that comes out as a little bit of interest and a little bit of maybe interest later.
Yeah, we can hold off on that. I mean, I, I think something that you'll see in the next OE report, um, that I know Hannah will speak to passionately, and that is, um, the use of restraint isolation. And around, um, you know, there's a big push to not go hands-on with kids. And what are all the other things we can do? There are instances where when a kid is in danger, you know, that there, you know, you feel like you want to do that or you need to do that, and yet there's a lot of pressure to be absolutely no hands-on at all. As we sat through a conference, um, with lots of conversation around that, and there's not a unanimous opinion on this. Um, and so there's a lot of conversation, but that's in the next OE.
I have one more question about this OE before we move on to them. Do you feel like, it's a little hard for me to, to assess this out with the, uh, the like, you know, N is smaller than 10 of it all. But we feel like the discipline that we're doing is proportionate racially, given the size of our populations on the, in the school?
It's, it's under in a lot of it, actually. It's, we're, we're way under, with the exception, you know, if you look at the gender piece, um, as was pointed out. And then Erin, would you also say, I mean, obviously, if you look at the total population of students who are being suspended, we're overrepresented by white students, white males.
White males are overrepresented.
Yep.
So it's not a concern at all that it's that.
Why that's.
Well, if you're a white male. We're not concerned at all that our minority students are being over-disciplined.
No.
Not in white male colleges.
No, we're not saying that.
Yeah.
With that question, uh, I didn't have a concern there with the numbers, but I'm more, a little more curious on, on how many out of districts have.
We do the proportionality stuff, it's not reported out on that. We said, we track that separately, um, and that's something that when you do language review, if that's something you want to add to this, we definitely can do that. I can put a pin in that and help remind you at the next meeting, because that could be something.
I think that's important too, I agree.
And, and I will say too, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, um, it is something that's considered when, when giving discipline is the abilities of the student in terms of comprehension, um, whether or not the behavior is controllable and that type of thing. And there's actually an entire process, which is a manifestation of the disability. So you determine whether the conduct is actually a direct result of the person's disability, which in fact could be. Um, it doesn't necessarily have to have no impact, but that would mitigate against potential exclusion, expulsion, that type of thing, or discipline. Um, so those are things that we take into consideration. Um, so I just want you to have some, fix some solace in the fact that that is something we look at deeply. We also look at what is the, what is the status or the disability of the victim. So all of those things are.
You know, other questions about this one? So there's no action given on this?
There is action.
There is.
Either you can approve the whole thing or you can go by sections. Typically, you've been going by the whole thing. Unless there's noted exceptions.
I know we find a superintendent compliance with OE three appropriate treatment of community members. Second.
Uh, all in favor of, I don't know, superintendent compliance with this? And, um, please say hi, students and board members. Any opposed? Any objections? Okay, that's two, two, two zero, five zero. Thank you.
Okay, the next report's a little bit more involved. And so I'm going to bring, uh, our team members actually to, um, the table for this one, just because there's a lot of moving parts here, so come on up.
Hannah, we were almost passionate.
Hi, perfect job, yams.
So as we transition into this one, you know, this is one we're constantly working on, um, especially OE nine. But I do want to introduce you to Giovanna Icoseski. Um, you might have, you've definitely seen her around, um, and you may have found interactions, but so much of the data that you get in your reports is all generated by Giovanna. She's the one who's, you know, pulling stuff out of cedars, pulling things out of Skyward. Um, she does a lot of uploads and data reporting to the state when we have to put in things, federal, um, reports as well. Um, and just one of her goals this year was to have more leadership and more opportunities. And what better way than to bring her here for this fantastic board, uh, tonight? But, um, you know, Giovanna, just want to thank you for all that you do, pulling all this data and managing all of it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So with that, I'll turn it over. Nova, why don't you take it from there?
Yeah, sure. So our first level two will be, um, item number three, so that will be Giovanna.
Should we add to that? Yep, okay. So this is our summary with our enrollments and withdrawal information, and there's a couple of different sections to it. And, uh, this is kind of summarizing our, um, enrollment information. Uh, there's a section specifically from February of 24, February 1st to September of 2024. Um, and then there's also a section on, um, uh, the enrollment survey and exit surveys that we also conduct here. So I'll just start us, begin with the, um, summary of enrollment. So here is this first slide where we took the last three school years, um, and color-coded it. Green is our current year and we're looking at our, um, enrollment. And so we are seeing that typically we have smaller populations in our, uh, lower grade levels, but we see, uh, kind of like an increase as we go up. Um, so we have bigger cohorts as we, um, move forward. So we are seeing, um, much of the same, um, trends, um, that we've kind of seen in the previous school years. Um, with a little bit of exception here now with a little up and down. But we are seeing the groups a little bit on the smaller side going up in, and then, um, we're seeing the bigger groups going forward, so.
Can I just, the, um, so the colors by, it doesn't follow a cohort?
No, it's the, the population for that particular school year.
It's great.
All right, I just, you said that, I just wanted to make sure I.
Yes. Um, from February to September, um, we had, uh, 150 students that withdrew in that particular, um, timeline. And we, uh, separated them out by reason. We, um, looked at the numbers and, uh, kind of put them all together. Um, so we have a little over half of the students that withdrew in that second half of the year, um, just left the district. Um, and that would include, um, students that left out of state or out of the country. So they're all kind of lumped into that category. And about 40% of the students that withdrew decided to go to private school. And that could be a school on the island or off the island, we included, um, all the private schools. And then we have a really small population that, um, chose an alternative education option, which is either homeschooling, um, or going for a GED or, um, doing online school. And then we have five, well, 5% for unknown or other. And that typically comes from, um, families who withdraw, withdraw but neglect to say why or where they're going, or maybe they don't know where they're going, we don't, um, they don't disclose that information. So we don't have that to report and we fall into that unknown or other category. And here's that same information kind of presented in chart format. Uh, again, the, um, the students that moved out of the district, we have a little over half of those students there. Uh, looking at the student withdrawal reasons by year. So we have a four-year, um, uh, summary here. So, um, looking at this last school year, as I mentioned, um, the semester two, which is the second half of the year, we have 150 students withdraw. The first half of the year, we have 55, so that gave us 205 students overall that have withdrawn. And when we compare that to the previous school year, it is, um, an increase, uh, from what we saw in 2022, 2023 school year, but it's still less than what we were seeing previously. Um, 2020 to 2021 is clearly a pretty high number because that was during COVID. We had a lot of families leave and go to private school or, um, online options. So, um, and another trend here is, um, most of our movement happens in the second half of a school year because that takes into account the summer, the summer months where people are moving, families are moving in, moving off. Um, and that's why we get a bigger number in that second half of the year, so. Uh, again, withdrawal reasons here, um, we compiled them again by school year. So we have the last four years here. Um, the current year is, sorry, not the current, 23, 24 year is in yellow, um, fall, right, far. And, um, look, the, according to this, um, chart, 131 of the students that withdrew, um, the reasons that they reported was they moved off of the island. So either off of the island or just left the district altogether, um, or even out of state. Uh, we have 43 of those, um, students that withdrew, uh, going to private school. And then we had, uh, 22 go to, um, unknown or other. Uh, again, we had, you know, in there, we have students that might need to leave because of medical reasons or they leave and they don't disclose why we're leaving, so they kind of fall into that category. And then we had, um, about nine students that decided to either pursue an online option or, um, do homeschooling, so. So this particular, uh, chart is showing us the, I think this is the one, uh, Dr. Reynolds, um, had shown earlier, where we are seeing the, in the red on the total withdrawals and then in the blue are total new enrollments. So we are seeing more enrollment coming in than we were seeing, uh, withdrawals. And again, this specific, uh, dataset is from February to September, the second half of the year. The next section is regarding our private school enrollment. So on this slide, we took the, uh, last three school years. Um, and what we do, we have, um, uh, our great, um, admin assistant, Heather Ross, this year. She's our newest addition. She is tasked, she was tasked with reaching out to our public, sorry, private schools on the island. Um, because, uh, we send them a survey to find out how many of our students, how many, um, rich African students are attending their private school instead of attending the, our district. So there, there are 104 schools that we surveyed. And, uh, looking at this school year, um, we have zero refused to answer. Uh, we have 43 schools that did not, um, did not answer. And what her methodology is when contacting the schools is if she starts out with, uh, reaching out by email, and then if they don't respond, she, um, reaches out by phone, she leaves messages, she, uh, tries to reach out again. And then if they don't respond, it don't respond. So, um, so there are, they did not answer, there's 43 in there. Um, there were 57 schools that reported. And so we have about 514 students that are attending private schools currently. Um, there were some changes in our, um, number of private schools. So apparently three have closed since, uh, the 23, 24 reporting. Um, Seattle Lutheran High School, Torah Academy, Lexington Northwest and Venture High School. And then there was a consolidation, uh, between Willow's Prep and Bellevue Montessori. So there's gonna, it's actually 100 schools now going forward, um, to, uh, survey. Looking at our, um, top private schools that, um, have students in, uh, from Marshall Island. St. Monica's is the, um, near the, they have a top there with 121 of our students. Um, then the French American School is, has 83 students. Um, and then Seattle Academy has 54. And, um, there was a little bit of a change from last school year in that, um, Seattle Prep and the Bush School both made it now into our top 10. They have a little bit of an increase in enrollment. So that pushed down, um, our other, um, two other schools that were there previously. And so they, they had a little bump up there. So again, there's that 514 total, um, out of those schools, total schools. Again, these are our 10, uh, top, uh, top 10 private schools and, um, they're same-organized at 29%, almost a, almost a third of the population, um, with French American School about 20% of our students. Um, and then there's the two additional, uh, schools, the Bush School and Seattle Prep that just got bumped into our top 10. Um, but it represents that, those numbers again, those same numbers that I referenced before.
This is a little bit nitpicky, but can we put in there, like, I mean, you've got private schools enrollment, but, but then to look at the subheading of top 10 private schools, like the rankings, just making it clear that it's based on number of 98040 students enrolled, just.
I can definitely update that for sure.
We're not coming out.
I don't know how to say it better, but.
Yeah, right.
So on this slide, we're looking at a historical comparison of those top 10 private school enrollment, um, enrollments based on years, so we're seeing that, um, um, there were increases, uh, again, for the Bush School and Seattle Prep. And then, um, there were increases in, um, with St. Monica. I'm sorry, they lost, uh, St. Monica. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. It was, um, yeah, yeah. So Hamlin and Lakeside and Seattle Academy, um, all had losses. I'm sorry, all had increases, I'm saying it backward, I apologize. Um, with, um, St. Monica's being, um, down to, from 141 to 121. And just looking at that comparison, we're seeing a little bit of kind of like up and down in the middle, some of those other schools, so. Uh, here's our 24, 25, this current school year private schools enrollment, and this is by grade level. So we're seeing the biggest, biggest populations attending private school are the fifth, sixth and seventh grades, um, with the smallest populations being, um, kindergarten and first grade. And then we do, you know, then we start to kind of go down a little bit in our, um, high school grades. And then we do, you know, then we start to kind of go down a little bit in our, um, high school grades.
Do you have any, sorry, do you have a, just on that previous slide, do you have any idea why the number would drop after seventh grade? Like I would expect to see it kind of steady, yeah.
I think there's a, a much larger impetus for families to come back and get their students aced, maybe for a year before or before they go to private school.
Again, this is private school enrollment by grade level over the last three years. Um, we're seeing the, um, again, the kindergarten, uh, first grade, they had a drop, um, in their enrollment. Uh, the green bar is our current year. Um, we did see, uh, well, mainly drops, I think, in, in enrollment. We did see a bump in, uh, grades, grades three, seven, ten, and twelve. We did see a little bump up on, in those grade levels. And this is, um, we're comparing the Mercer Island School District enrollment as of November one. With the private school enrollment. Um, and the, again, the green columns are our current year. So, uh, looking at our, um, kindergarten, our, we have two hundred and nineteen students enrolled in the district as of November first. And there's thirty enrolled in private schools. So there's a change of a negative ten there. That's what that is illustrating. Um, the private changes, they dropped from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five. We lost ten students. Whereas, um, we gained twenty-nine students going from, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four kindergarten to twenty, uh, twelve, four, twenty-five kindergarten. What I like about this chart is that it actually shows us, um, kind of if you follow diagonally the cohorts. Um, the twenty-three, twenty-four kindergarten is, was one ninety, but this year's first grader is two fifteen. So that's, uh, twenty-five additional students that were, um, added to that cohort. And going down those grade levels, we mainly see increases in those cohorts for the school year. Um, the only decrease we saw was for, um, eleventh grade. I believe it was eleventh grade, there was, um, a little bit of a decrease, yeah, four kids. And then, uh, um, twelfth grade is, uh, status quo, the same number. So, um, but yeah, just looking at that, that from that lens, I thought that was kind of interesting to see, so. Uh, enrollment changes from last school year. We, um, highlighted in gray is our MISD enrollment, um, again, as of November first. Whereas the red is the private, um, school change. And so you'll see, um, for us, again, kindergarten, we had an increase, they had a decrease. In first grade, we had a decrease, they had a decrease, so both had decreases. Um, and then as you go forward, in seventh grade, we had thirty-two student increase. But they also had a fourteen student increase, and we both saw increases there. Um, and then eighth grade, they had a thirty student drop in eighth grade, um, whereas we had a twenty-five student increase.
And those are year-over-year numbers, not cohort numbers? So when you see first grade down forty-eight, we have a larger, we have a larger second grade class by far than the first grade class the year before. So the negative forty-eight isn't losing those kids. It's showing you, we have forty-eight fewer first graders than we did the year before, but that doesn't mean we've lost forty-eight kids.
I, I'm just wondering how meaningful this chart is without knowing what, like. Shouldn't there be a total number of that age student or kid on, in this, in the zip code? And then, I mean, because like you said, I don't want to say pairs, but if there's, if the class itself, we know we have an arm of this work, you know? There was a big year for whatever reason in terms of births. But if there's a fifty-kid difference, I mean, what are we measuring, I guess is my question?
I think one of the things that, uh, to give you context of to why like this might be a slide, just to pay attention to. Is when you hear the rumblings of, you know, teachers are having to move schools and we're having to change classes. And I had to change grades three consecutive years, or this teacher's, why are we doing splits? I think this gives a little context, just to say, because there is a cohort of students, there are fifty fewer. This year in this grade level, whereas last year there were fifty more. So that's potentially, you know, three classrooms of kiddos and teachers having to move and splits and numbers. So I think it's just context giving.
I guess just when it's comparing to the private school numbers. It's, if this, that is valid and I get it, but what, then why are we comparing it to private schools? And I just, I'm just looking at, I mean, I want people to challenge us and question us and are we doing the best? And what else can we be doing? But I also am not interested in giving data that people can then manipulate and make things up and, and, which happens all the time. And it's frustrating, and I know you guys get frustrated with it too, but, uh, but I don't understand what. I mean, those reasons make perfect sense, but there's no reason for comparison for that.
Yeah, it doesn't help us out a ton other than to know that they've lost students in a, you know, year-over-year, but it's not a cohort.
It's a small group, I mean, grade, age, whatever.
I think we probably had this in there, um, just thinking objectively is because the OE really asked us to compare. With private schools, I think that's why we were putting this in there, but.
And then the student exit, student family exit survey. We, uh, send the exit survey out to families that withdraw, leave the district, um, twice a year. We do that first, uh, semester, uh, break and then we do the second, um, half of the year. So this, uh, survey was sent in August and it was, uh, reflecting on those students that withdrew from February to September. Um, we had, um, families, we, uh, answered the survey that represented sixty students. And this is by grade level, what, uh, grade levels those represented. So about thirteen, well, thirteen percent of the responses we got, um, were for ninth grade students that withdrew and left the district, so.
Like they were, would have started ninth grade that year and they left, or like they were in ninth grade already?
They were in ninth grade and then left during their ninth grade year.
During the school year.
Or between, or over the summer before they enrolled in tenth grade. So this is what grade they were in, in the twenty-three, twenty-four year.
Right. Um, exit reason, uh, well, that was one of the questions that they were asked. And, um, again, it was representing sixty students. A little over a third of the students, um, went to private school. And then, um, a little over half of the responses were moving out of the district. And again, this includes, um, students leaving the country, leaving the state, or just leaving the district to go to another, uh, public school. Um, and five percent of the responses that stated none of the above. And then we did have five percent responses that they were gonna go pursue either, um, online schooling or homeschool.
Yeah, does moving out of MISD mean like, they can like, oh, they physically are moving like their residence? Or like, they're like open enrolling in some other school, like other public school? Or does that like?
It can include both. They, um, typically, if they do state to the registrar, the, um, school registrar, that they're going to a particular school district. They don't always say if they're doing a choice transfer to go to that district. They just tell us, okay, we're leaving, we're gonna go to Bellevue, or we're leaving, we're gonna go to Issaquah. Or if they're really, you know, they'd like to say all the details, they'll tell them, yes, we're moving and we're moving to these districts. So we don't always know if, um, they're doing a choice transfer, so.
I wonder if you want to move that as, uh, an option, is choice transfer?
Yeah, in this data, we don't have it, but we do have it because we track every single choice transfer in and out of the district.
Oh, you're right.
Um, so like our N is, is fewer than ten of students who choice out of MISD to another district. It is almost exclusively, um, moving. So moving, maybe you move to Bellevue, or you move to Issaquah, you move to Seattle, you move to Lindwood or Bellingham, or you move to Iowa.
And do those, those, and less than ten, is that include if their parents are staffed, some in another district and, or?
It's inclusive of that.
Inclusive.
The difference between, if you go back one slide, the difference between this dataset and the one that you saw earlier, which is. It seems like, I thought we already saw this, is this is self-report based on the survey. The first one you saw includes a lot of the anecdotal information that all the registrars collect as the families are heading out the door. So we try to get it, so this, this is why it's maybe a little different or why it's passed again. This is the sixty families that answered our survey versus the other one tries to capture all the families as they're headed out the door.
And Giovanna and the other registrars, they can track down, um, where students go. Like within the state, Giovanna can see if they register in somewhere else in the state. So there's, there's lots of data.
Yes, detective, detective. I get good at that sometimes. Um, one of the questions asked on the survey is, uh, how do the, how do the families feel about their academic experience here in Mercer Islands? Um, we had, um, we have light green and the dark green, where strongly positive, positive. So about thirty-six, a little over thirty-six, uh, percent of the responses were positive. Then we also have twenty-five percent and thirty-three percent, um, in the negative, I'm sorry, five percent and twenty-five percent in the negative, so about thirty percent. And then thirty-three percent neutral. So it's roughly a third, a third, a third. Um, and that's, yeah, that's, you've got forty-seven families, so.
Did we ask other questions? Like, do we ask about their social experience or like? Social experience, or you know what I mean? Like, do we just ask about the academic experience?
There's some additional questions, um, on there, um.
I think we did a couple of them that come up here.
This is, well, this is, um, some of the reasons that some of the wording that they provided. Families that decided to leave the district. I don't know if we captured any other, I think, um, questions. Because this is my last slide on the exit survey. So that's a good, uh, we can definitely bring the questions.
Seems like an equal number of kids, like, it's too challenging and not challenging enough.
So the survey is a little more quantitative than qualitative, I guess, in terms of the questions, the. I, I, uh, when I see the numbers, I see, I see data. And at the same time, those twenty percent that went to private school, I am not seeing. How we are navigating the needs of the students and what we can do better. So, uh, where I would love to see kind of maybe those who reported bullying, their correlation with those who took in harassment. Or there was, or what was happening inside maybe with schools that, that moved them to go that, that way. But at the same time, like, there's, there are just a few questions and not enough to improve the system to serve this to. So, uh, just tell me number without giving me actual items to improve, and serve this to as our leaving. So, um, I don't know if there's a way that we can capture that with qualitative questions that, that not all will, will answer, but, uh, but will capture a little more.
And the, the flip side of Christina's comment is, or Christina's suggestion is like, like. If this, if a family, you've seen this to private school, there's number one, what was your educational experience in Mercer Island? Like, was it positive, negative, you know, neutral? But it's also like, what do you think you're going to get from the private school that we could give you? Is it small classes? Is it, you know, religion? Is it like, like what, what elements are there that we are not providing, some of the camp, right? But like, but like what elements are we not providing that you think will be okay? Is it better, you know, you know, education that's focused on learning for kids with dyslexia, right? Like, that's clearly like something that we're not offering to the scale of a private school that specializes in it, you know? So I would love to see more, if they're willing to do it, if you can, fill it out, I would love to see.
A way to see what is, if we will offer, like religion, it will never happen. But definitely something that it is, uh, uh, something like this, like so that, that we can move forward, towards. Or if it's bullying, like what's happening inside the classroom that don't decide to leave, like we have to do a more intervention sort of. Uh, a little more on that too.
This is the perfect time for this conversation because we send our next survey out on February first.
On the flip side of the survey, we have a new family enrollment survey that we, um, sent out to new families that have come in, um, over that same, um. Actually, it's mainly from that, uh, summer months. Um, and so we, uh, this is sent once a year in August, again, to the families.
You sent this out, Ian, you sent this out in November. For a new family that were prior to the new family enrollment, I sent out before and after. And we had a QR code in the package that they sent in.
Thank you. Um, again, some words, uh, that they, uh, described why they decided to come to Mercer Island. Um, again, reputation, good reviews, so kind of on the other end of things from, uh, the exiting students. One of the questions was, what are the choosing factors? Um, and out of four hundred and seventy-six, uh, surveys that were sent. Um, sixty-three families responded, which represented eighty-six students in the district. And looking at the choosing factors that they had to select from, um, the highest, twenty percent, a little over twenty percent, uh, was from strong academics. And then we had a seventeen percent, over seventeen percent because of the location. And then other factors were community, uh, quality and the rating of the school district. This is the enrollment by grade level. Um, again, sixty-three families, eighty-six students. Um, twenty of them were kindergarten. They were, uh, moved into our district, um, over the summer. Uh, then we have seventeen of them were grade nine. So, and then there's kind of spread other grade levels in there. This is, uh, asking what's, what type of school they came from. They decided, then they, um, we have the highest number, twenty-four, came from a private KPL school in Washington. Nineteen, nineteen, the blue is private preschool, which would be for incoming kindergarten students. Then we have the seventeen that represented another public school in Washington. The ones that are other, they did not report, so. One of the questions was, did you move to Mercer Island specifically to enroll in MISD? The yellow represents yes, that's specific. And then the blue is, it was part of the decision, but there were other factors and then the red is the no. So almost two-thirds, it looks like, um, said, you know, if they really wanted to, were interested in Mercer Island's school district. Another question that was asked is what type of search tools did they use to get information about Mercer Island? Um, the highest, twenty-seven, almost twenty-eight percent, um, reported that they used the Mercer Island website. Um, then we have twenty-one percent, uh, from friends and families. So they got some positive information from friends and families about the district and almost twelve percent, um, from grade schools.
I'm curious whether the number, the percentage, um, that got information from their Realtor has gone up since, since the district's been doing more outreach to Realtors over the couple of years.
That's interesting.
I'm curious.
Yeah.
I wonder if you have any way to up the response table for this? I mean, it seems like it's like fifty or twenty percent of our new families, right?
I, um, I just wanna say like, thank you. Like I, you know, when you see like, we sent surveys out to a hundred and four different schools, I mean, that's a huge undertaking. I think it's very valuable information, fairly recent information that the district's only been collecting for a couple of years. Um, I, I, I mean, the information that we gleaned by getting a pretty comprehensive picture of where students are going. On the island that aren't going, uh, to MISD, um, is good, but, you know, as you'll see, it takes a lot of legwork. Um, and tracking a hundred, I guess now would be a hundred surveys going forward, um, is a large undertaking with valuable information, so thank you.
Sure.
Are there any questions, students, any questions?
No.
Next session.
Move on to the other session, please, please, okay. So essentially, this is just an overview of the public records. We continue to give public records. You'll notice that we made sort of a strategic decision, um, to streamline our, um. Process, reduce cost and improve our responsiveness by hiring a dedicated, um, public records officer. And I still, you know, here, sorry. Uh, and that's actually, that has worked in terms of reducing our overall costs. The benefit is any of someone dedicated to that work, but it also has reduced our reliance on outside counsel. The benefit is any of someone dedicated to that work, but it also has reduced our reliance on outside counsel. Um, because then I become, I as general counsel can provide support to the records officer. But before I'm trying to do it all, that was my role and that was, uh, more challenging. The, um, we've also seen sort of a downward trend in the number of public records requests. Some of that is because we did have pretty, um, large requests in the past and numerous requests in the past. Um, but some of it is also just how record requests are being treated. Um, because as case law evolves, more things are following in FERBA, which is other student records, so they don't appear here. So again, as before, what you see here on the records logs are not FERBA requests. If it's something specific to the student, um, that's not appearing here. That doesn't mean that there isn't a lot of staff time and energy spent on those requests or that we're not responsive. They have a completely different paradigm under which those are responded to. Um, but our record officer also manages that. Um, in terms of the other thing that we've done, just in, just for the board's permission, is we have changed to and adopted a, um, a portal, a records portal through Granicus, so that we can, there's an easier interface between, um, the district and the user, the requestor. And it also enables us to share information, upload information and track what's going on to ensure compliance and timely responsive to records. Instead of previously, we tried to manage it with pool tasks, um, and spreadsheets, which was like, which was challenging for multiple users. So we've been able to sort of spread the work and be more efficient about it. Um, and attachment fee, as you can see, it's sort of a detailed account of requests and the tax associated there too. Any questions?
What does it mean when a request is abandoned?
Um, so there, if a, uh, request or fails to either respond, um, when we provide them records, if they never pick them up and there are other requests that are going to be, that it's the initial production, because often if there's a large number of requests, uh, responsive records, we'll have an initial production, secondary production. But if they never pick up the first production, then that can be considered abandoned. Other times, um, people make requests and then they come back and say they actually didn't want that information and sometimes don't change their request. Um, so that's another reason why it can be affirmatively abandoned, when someone affirmatively withdraws it.
Some of those ones were.
So those, those are the two ways you're gonna, one is by failing to pick up your records.
Yeah.
And within, and you have thirty days.
Yeah.
And we remind them like, hey, these are here. Um, because it, the interest is not spending agency time and resources cr- uh, evaluating and processing responsive records or someone who's never going to actually use them or gather them. And the other way is if someone affirmatively withdraws it.
I'm sorry, can you remind me, the, the sums of money on here, that's the cost of the district? That's not, people aren't needing to pay for correct copies of books, or some?
There, there, there are fees associated. Often the fees associated, they're relatively nominal. Um, you know, what we can charge people, you know, people will bring in a dime or they'll bring in two dollars. So, I mean, they're not, uh, undue leave against them, um, for most requesters.
And then the withdrawn? If a request is withdrawn, but we've already spent like the hundred and seventy dollars to fill the request?
So it just doesn't get filled back to the requestor, that's just reflecting how much it's cost us to make that, to begin processing.
Uh, the next one's A L E. Okay. So this is about, um, A L E, which for us, um, Mercer Island is generally, uh, exclusively spent online, online and online courses. Um, just highlights, um, last year, uh, if, if you look between twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four, you'll see, um, slightly fewer courses, uh, offered that students were interested in, slightly more students served. Um, our average monthly student F T E went up slightly, um, and average monthly student headcount went up slightly. Um, one of the biggest things that we changed was we did a review last year, um, of our A L E program. And what we were offering, how it was being offered. Um, we previously had point eight F T E dedicated to A L E online. Um, and the way that we had the system structured was we had, um, four certified teachers at point two each, or one teacher at point four, um, who were then offering a period to monitor students who were completing online coursework through outside providers. Um, that was limiting. We were finding it more challenging for students to be able to take their online courses because they could only do it four periods in the day, the periods that that teacher was, that the teachers were assigned. And so it left three periods uncovered. It also didn't provide much flexibility for students who might need support either before or after school. So after many conversations over the course of the year, the team decided, um, a, a more responsible use of the same dollar was to provide more access to students. And so for this year, we shifted the model and we hired a full-time A L E, um, classified staff member who provides the ability for students to access before school, all seven periods and after school, to be able to take online courses, so that the period that a course was offered, um, or available, didn't limit a student's, uh, ability to take it. Uh, so that is a change for, for this year. So far in our check-ins, things are going well. Um, and that's my report for A L E.
I know that we don't offer kind of online options for elementary school level. Is middle school an option? Is that an option for middle school or is it just high school?
So we, um, during COVID, we sought, um, approval to be an online full-time provider. And what we're doing is we actually were offering our own Red Remote. Uh, and I don't know why I still call it that, but that's how I differentiate. Like we had Red Remote Learning that was taught by our staff and they were remote, they were synchronous. And we did not re-up that, um, and so we don't have opportunities for elementary. Um, middle school students can take courses, but, but just like high school students, we don't have any students who are full-time, a one-point-O online.
Okay.
Um, we can have students, up to fifty percent of their enrollment can be online. Um, and, you know, there are always exceptions when we have students who need home hospital services or who, for a variety of reasons, might have a reduced schedule. Um, we don't hold them to say, well, you can only, you're only able to access two courses, only one can be online. If they're able to engage in school and two courses online is what they can do, then that's what we're going to make happen.
Um, if a student in high school wants to do an online courses, it has to be during a school day? Or what if it's a night course, right? So I, I have no idea.
So we have, we have certain providers that we contract with. Um, so those, those providers have been vetted. And then we work specifically with them so that our, our support staff and our students are only using two platforms. We're not having to use, you know, any platform offered by any provider. Um, and so those courses are not, they're offered during the day, like they're not synchronous courses. Many of the online courses, actually all that I can think of, um, are mostly asynchronous. And then they've got opportunities to connect with their, their teachers who are certified teachers provided through the vendor. Um, they have office hours and then the, the access they have to the humans to support them are when they are assigned a period. Uh, and that's what we call our mentor here, where they're helping understand the platform, understand the content, understand, um, how to access and ask questions.
But they can work weekends, eight o'clock at night, six in the morning, on any of their assignments or whatnot. And a lot of students do, they fit it in wherever, but, yeah.
Very flexible.
Others on A L E. Athletics.
Oh.
I think that's me.
Yes. The only thing I wanted to share is we, uh, for a long time, we have recorded a number that, um, A L E courses were funded at eighty, eighty-seven percent. Um, or point eight-seven. Um, and in looking at this year's funding, they're going to be funded at ninety-two percent. So point nineteen.
Is there a reason?
I don't know. I don't know. I just, I looked at the numbers I was comparing. I was like, oh, it went up a little bit. This is great. Seven more dollars.
Um, in terms of athletics, which is number seventeen, this should be pretty quick. Uh, the data is there about proportionality between males and females and, and opportunities to participate in athletics. If you see, first on a high school, we're pretty close within two percent, um, of proportionality. Females are, are two percent less than the enrollment, um, and males are two percent more. I'm still pretty, pretty close proportionate. Uh, at I M S, you'll know there's actually a bigger difference, um, this last year. So males are actually, uh, seven percent under proportion and, and females are seven percent over. I, I attribute that to, um, A B O, earlier talked about kind of in the, the report about the connection between high school and middle school. Um, last year, the, actually, two years ago, the high school, uh, drill team, person in charge was interested in starting a drill team at the middle school. That came to fruition last year with about thirty to forty additional kids. So I think that's going to represent that, that change at I M S. Without that, I think we'd be a similar proportion there. So, um, the data is there, pretty close. Um, nothing to learn.
A question that I have asked, does that include extracurricular athletics that aren't school-sponsored? Because the number just seems high when I think of like half the middle school. And what, what are those? I mean, at the high school, I know there's a lot of sports, but half the middle schoolers participate.
So I don't think this is saying half the middle schoolers have participated. I think it's saying that of the, of the middle schools, of the middle schoolers that participate, fifty-four percent are, um, female and forty-six percent are male.
And then I think it's next year, um, we have an athletic interest survey. We do that every three years and I think we're cycling to that this spring.
It says on here, and I wasn't tasked with that one, but I did read, the report was last given, um, I think the next, next.
I think this year, yeah, I think this year. So next year, you'll get an interest survey. And the, the real importance of that one for us is, are there sports that students aren't interested in? That we don't offer, that we might want to be thinking about? Um, and so, um, and then also what's their experience of the current one? I don't know, Jamie, you did that survey for a while when you were an A D, um, with the interest survey, but.
And every, every once in a while, like ski, bring on skiing and like start a bowling team. And, you know, there'd be like a, a surge of interest. And then when it really came down to like, well, you know, let's put your feet there. And it was like, well, I like skiing on my own terms and like bowling is all right, but I don't want to have to play.
What's the, um, do you know offhand, like what the overall like participation rate, is it the middle school and high school for athletics?
Um, I didn't look at, I can tell you at the middle school, because I'm, I'm there, you know, we, and, and these are, these are not unique students, you know, I, I can think of in our, in the fall, we have, um, about a hundred and forty kids that do cross-country. And then in the, the winter, we follow with wrestling, which is probably a handful of female and about forty male. We also, excuse me, in the fall, have volleyball, which is growing, which is probably about eighty, eighty girls. And then the spring, we follow that back up with track and field, which is about another hundred and forty. So yeah, those together, we're probably getting forty percent of our kid, forty, four hundred kids participating, but not four hundred unique kids participating. At the high school, I would have no idea, but boy, I know there's lots of teams and.
I think it's about a thousand participants, right around there is what Lindsay was saying the other day, our athletic director. So now that's duplicated as well, but if you add up all the seasons, it's about a thousand participants.
That doesn't include kids who are like in a sport that's organized enough that they're getting key credit, for example, but it isn't.
I, I think at I M S, we have a, um, uh, what's the, oh, the frisbee. Oh, the frisbee, there's, there's. But yeah, there's lots of different options that, you know, that you brought up now, because we know that sports are, are some kids' deal. So then you throw in activities, you throw in, as we talked, and when I M S comes and presents, talking about Dungeons and Dragons Club, which has another seventy-five kids, and I've had some of those kids get, their blood pressure gets moving pretty good. Yeah, so, uh, I think we're looking good there, but I, I do think it's always good to look and see what we're missing and how we can pull more kids into extracurricular activities.
Just to have a question, as many years as, as sports have been in the district, has there ever been a move by parents to start like a Mercer Island crew?
Oh, yeah.
And there's, there's a pretty active one right now. The crew community, like, we're growing from Mercer Island?
Yes.
Oh.
Although it's, it's still like, I, for place, whether it hasn't been anything, and we've heard bang.
Yeah.
I mean, given that we are an island in the middle of the lake.
Right.
That we don't have crew and crew.
I just, it's just like, I know the city is redoing the boat, and it's, it's the Furbank. I'll try, I'll search through, there, there's. I definitely don't have any potential roars in my.
At I M S, the kids do your crew go across the bridge.
Right, I know a lot of, a lot of.
I will answer the question, I have a few questions for you, but first, I think it's also words toward the, the boats. So that has a lot to do, so they have to, um, that they're, they're actually actively forming to, uh, to get funds to find a facility to store clothes and buy the boat. So, so I think they, they found anyone, but the storage of that.
Sure.
So, so, uh, but there's, there is. Uh, so, uh, so you mentioned that the numbers are only athletics or athletic and clubs?
These, these numbers are just athletics.
Right.
These numbers, I, I believe are pulled for students that, that are involved in the pay-for-play model.
Okay, and then the question for you, Jamie, is when you were saying, surveying the students to see what are we bringing in, are you thinking to bring them into athletics or as clubs?
So usually the, the, the survey, um, is what are we missing? Um, and the W I A A dictates what, which sports we can offer as, um, scholastically, uh, competitive. And then beyond that, it's looking at clubs and other ways to operate. So like, um, Jody mentor director Lee said, mountain biking. Um, and so like, that's not a, a W I A sport, it's not even a club sport where like lacrosse for a long time has been. Um, but there were enough students interested to form a group. And then, you know, it's finding opportunities for students who have like-minded interests to get together. So it's a little bit of a.
The question goes, uh, because I have heard from different clubs that they want to be part of the athletic department because the toll on the coaches to do all the, the health requirements that they have to do, so it's double the effort because they are not part of the athletic department. So the coach by themselves has to do every single session, all the, everything again. So, so I know either a way to integrate the class with that data that it's already submitted back to the district or a way to, to support those clubs that have limited funds and the coaches that are already doing that. Uh, if, uh, those clubs cannot be part of this life, but if they can already, like to integrate them first before adding extras.
As an example, Christina, I, I believe that one of the board meetings, I can't remember if this year or last year, the ultimate frisbee group.
Yeah.
And, and talked about how they weren't, there was some challenges there because they weren't a club.
So let me, I just, so what this data point is telling us is making sure that we're title line compliant. So they were providing. So, right, I just want to make sure that like what we're monitoring right now is the title line compliance. But then with regards to the clubs, so our inner, inner school competitions are governed by W I A A that we belong to. So they're the ones that determine whether it's, it's a varsity sport or a club sport. And lacrosse, which we've had tremendous success in and been competing against schools for a long time, is a club sport. And it's all a matter of funding. And I just wonder if it's in, in, I don't know if this is from the board or if it should be like high school P T A, if there's an inter. I, the, the issue you raise is a valid one and it's, do our club athletics need, or other clubs for that matter, need more support, um, from the administration in order to be successful? And is that a place that we want? Are asking our superintendent to discuss with his leadership team of making sure that they provide, whether or not it's , um, resources money-wise, but resources in terms of staff time, um, so that we can provide more opportunities to students.
I think that also is double the effort, because for example, and I will put the ultimate frisbee, uh, as an example, a lot of the kids that do ultimate frisbee in, at the fall, they practice fall in the winter. So the data goes anyway to the system because they're registering. But then the ultimate frisbee coach does have to do it anyway, just because there's not, they're not part of integrated the system.
You mean like the same school staff?
Um, every, every, uh, health point.
Like, like they get physicals and things like that?
Everyone.
The club coaches have to, that doesn't go through A S B? It goes through.
It does not, they, they require it every time.
No, 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 they require it, but it should be going through the one system.
So some of it, we can look into that.
Quickly circling back to the funding and crew and like what in my view, and I think many is sort of an ambition on the island. I mean, certainly would have to work with the city to find a suitable spot. But we find all the time, you know, capital-related facilities for athletics, whether it's playing fields, we just heard about Mary Way, we have tennis courts, we have a football stadium. Um, so we, if there was the desire of the community for, you know, to put in money to a crew facility, we could certainly do that in connection with an ex cat tech bond, as long as we had a location to situate the boat house. Um, I mean, I just put put that out.
That is, that is true. And if community members were committed and brought it to us, I I don't know that it's something we need to go looking for. And as a former rower myself, who went to Mount Baker during high school um and huge value in it, one of the bonuses for me was being able to meet kids from other districts. I I swam here on the island, and then I did crew um at Mount Baker, where I got to meet kids in other communities, which and, you know, and it it was, it was a great opportunity to be able to kind of escape the island and do those things. So I I'm not opposed to it. If people brought it to us, I think it would be a phenomenal opportunity. But.
Well, I think.
Also, potentially some overlap with the city and what they're doing. Oh, boat house, so like that.
Right, no, and I'm just saying, I don't know that we need to go looking for ways to.
Well, I would say the the main takeaway I want you to know as a board is next year, you're going to see the interest.
Yeah.
And we're going to bring, we you will see what we find from the suits. Um, and so we do every three years, want to know what of our students are experiencing. Um, you know, Lucy wants biking and to race bikes, which is a fashion nerd. Um, but uh but you're going to get that. And I want you to know as board, we're actively looking for those things from our students.
Swift in the gym. Uh, he's a. I pay back.
Oh, yeah.
So lastly, uh Hannah, uh restraint and isolation, and uh we do an annual report to you on this. We also report this to the state as well.
Yes, so um this is um the restraint and isolation data from this past school year. Um, and it covers restraint, escort, isolation, and reverse evacuation, which are all defined at the top there. Let you read those. Um, so at our elementary, we had twelve incidents, um but the number of students was less than ten. Um, and at secondary, there were ninety-two, and it was less than ten students. Of note is that all of this data is from not only schools and um not only students in our schools, but students that we um that are placed in an out-of-district placement. Um, and the secondary number is all a hundred percent of those incidents were at out-of-district placements.
I assume in various states with various laws on restraint.
They are obligated to follow our policy because we are funding the student.
Do that?
We.
We. Yes. I I would love to know your answer. And there have been ongoing conversations about that. Um, but um for the most part, yes, I would say they are following our policy.
We visit all of our entities. Um, we go onsite and we visit that. We have had students that we've had to move out of facilities in the past because of noncompliance and concerns um or lack of communication, where they're not reporting the way that we want it to. So it's an ongoing conversation um with that. So absolutely. So those are our reports on O E nine.
I might have missed it, but this include reverse isolation?
Yes, so I think what's what's good.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, what's good to note here too is that um of all of the incidents, um only seven involved restraint, and the rest were primarily reverse um reverse isolation or reverse evacuation.
Any questions on that? Okay, then I move, we find the superintendent compliance of O E nine communications board.
Sorry.
All in favor of finding super compliance, please say aye, students.
Aye.
Board members.
Aye.
Any votes? Any extensions? Nope. That's two zero five zero. All right, I can put the consent agenda.
Some of those.
Session.
Okay, all in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye, students.
Aye.
Board members.
Aye.
Anybody who posts?
Yeah.
Uh, that's two zero five zero. Say consent agenda, and now we have superintendent and elders.
Um, just kind of looping back, uh just want to um see around with the future Islander Night on the sixteenth, it's at five thirty. And so there's kind of a kickoff at the beginning. Uh, Mr. Walt does a big welcome. Um, so we could either start the meeting and then take a recess and go up, or we could start at six o'clock or not attend at all, but it was brought up, you know, in terms of that event of whether or not the board wants to attend.
I'd rather start at six, so if we can go there before, I think it's a little right on.
I I think that.
Yeah, I I didn't either do that or stuff entirely. I wouldn't want to stop and come back and. I'm also in favor of skipping it entirely.
One of us.
Yeah. Not be, make it as long.
I don't agree with that. I I mean. You don't want to stop and start. Okay. We're telling people. Um, I I don't know if this is the right time to bring up. But is there any interest in shifting our board meetings to five thirty in general? Christina can't be here till five twenty?
It's only once a month that this happens.
Okay.
So it's up to, like, yeah, it has work. I think that it's probably more on the planning that make sure that that everything that that is. And if I have questions ahead of time, I will send them uh like to I know that you know which one to go first, and I will not have uh that I would have uh something. So I have not been, I am listening. If I don't, if I don't say anything, it's because they are first.
Okay, it's only one. Yeah.
Yes, but it's a big issue.
But if there's something that's like critical that you really want to be involved in speaking in the session, if you let us know ahead of time, we can reorder the agenda to accommodate that.
See that that sounds good.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and then the last one would just be not forgetting, you know, in terms of that resolution and the climate change and whether or not you want to put that on a future board meeting. But that can be part of your announcements, Steve. That's it.
Okay. Uh, that's just a report.
Um, do you want me to start, and then you can.
Yes, please.
Okay, so the main the big thing happening with the legislative, your legislative reps, is that um that Eastside, there's five Eastside school districts who are organizing a town hall with our legislators. We have commitments from all the forty-first, the three forty-first um legislators already, um but all five districts are asking their legislators to attend. And um this is a P T A-led, we are attending as sort of we will be presenting at the at part of the event, but the P T A is the one that's doing the inviting. Um, so the letters that that we have submitted for you guys to look at and um are ones that we would like to sign off on, saying our district is interested in participating, and we support people coming, and we want to, you know, encourage people to come in and show their legislators that we have financial needs, whatever, but um these letters are drafted by the P T A, and like the flyer that's gone out about it is drafted by the P T A. That was sort of brought home to me today in a in a coordinated to the other Eastsides board directors. Um so what we have, what we have for you are these two letters. One is about the um it's basically one uh one that was sort of a follow-up from our linkage session where we would like to to, you know, I just remind our legislators what our priorities are before they head into the session. Um, and this is, and then the, and this is, again, the P T A, and then one is um sort of, what was the other one then? Was it, there's there's different timing on the two. Fred, do you remember like the difference in the timing?
I don't.
They seem very similar to me, but the P T A had a very strong reason why they were sending two of them at different times.
Maybe one was for the meeting coming up, and the other one was more after they get the session going. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think that's right. The um, and so they're asking us to sign on to these letters with um sort of to have it sort of be like a district-supported push. Um, that is a little bit different from our from this town hall that the P T A's and school districts are organizing, because that A, our legislators are ready to be to attend, and B, um it's, this is like, these are more like general letters of the P T A sending out on behalf of all of us to say, you know, please come to school. Does that sound right?
Uh, uh, so if I'm correct, the first letter, it was a conjoined activity between P T A and uh and us supporting and the, but the second letter is one that will be sent to the community to sign as.
Oh, that's right, there you go. So that that is the main job, I'm sure.
Yeah. Matters. So the second letter is going to be sent after uh once we we collect the uh both of the signatures for the legislature, even if it's with session that they received, it's uh the whole point is to have numbers of citizens supporting uh the the district in that sense. So.
Yeah.
Yes. Uh. Uh, so those were those two letters, right? Yes. I don't know if you had that conversation, and I and I do have a class, Fred, I'm sorry, because I think that this was approved yesterday by the P T A, and the conversation has been very fast on sending the letters. Uh, uh, during the, uh, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna back a little bit on why the town hall uh uh idea happened. So uh, eh, another school district that it was Edmonds, I don't know, I didn't have. Yes, they they go together and set up a town hall together. Uh, having main stakeholders will be the P T A and the citizens. Uh, the school board director, sorry. The, sorry. I was gonna say, uh, 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 school board directors, superintendents, and.
Yeah.
Sorry?
The E S, the units.
Yeah, I was going.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. I am, I am getting there.
Uh, you should do the, yes. Uh, to ask partners to be part of this town hall uh with their respective legislators. So collectively, they have like ten together and eight of them attended. Uh, and they had a model that it was uh forty minutes of this this town hall. Uh, it was an organized effort, so they they would not repeat the information to present to the legislators and the community, what was the issues they were, uh, they wanted to address. And then after that, they had kind of smaller sessions with the legislators, having more uh individual and more uh uh one-on-one talk with them and and more of those who were represented. And it was very successful on on uh how this worked. And and they kind of presented it to all the legislature reps uh at the last, and then were being suggesting that this, this really is to this conversation needs to happen to with other legislators to make this effort a lot more collectively that those only legislators to know this information, but it has to be kind of expand, and it has been expanded. We are one district that is doing, well, the five of us, it's a whole relative, but there's another that they're they're starting to do, and the efforts are being across the state, uh multi district-wide. So so it's it's something that we're working together. And it's uh um it's a collective.
So in our case, it's Bellevue, um Lake Washington, Issaquah, us, and Brenton.
Yes.
For our event, and that will be at St. Amish High School on January the seventh.
Yes, January. So I am holding everybody uh saying you have to be there and bring one person.
And this is to be.
That's the way that we find everybody else. It will not be hybrid, and it's on purpose because people, uh, we want to show the legislators that we're going to be present. And people do choose to go hybrid when there's the option, especially in school life, and it's same. So so it is it's going to be uh uh in person. So so but it is, it's uh uh and and in the model, I think that the presenters there was one P T A parent, one superintendent, one board director, one uh future uh junior candidate. So so it is in a way that all the voices are heard uh with this collective message of we need uh kind of, you have to look at funding of schools. And and I I believe this is the first conversation on maybe how our budget will go. It will look into this and also eventually a larger conversation in the coming years of let's reassess the funding model, right? So so it was just the first effort towards that goal.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so yeah, I guess like a a a few thoughts and some questions. Uh, one, just on some of the like the details, I was looking in this handout, it was on the desperate gaps in state funding. I tried to correlate this to the F one ninety-six, and like I just couldn't tie numbers. Um, so I think you want to be real crisp on like where these numbers are. Uh, that one, I just said special education for the general fund expenditures was a little over fourteen million. Um, but here we have a little over eleven and a half million to get to the three point nine delta. Uh, so I just want to make sure that everything ties. More broadly, I I think there's the political sort of pragmatism that just last month, we sat down with Senator Wellman, Representative Sen. Uh, the state is projecting a deficit of ten to twelve billion dollars over the next four years, which is two and a half to three billion. And they said to make, you know, the asks like actionable. Um, this, assuming that it was represented, like other, that were representative of other districts, we're looking for seven more million dollars a year, which would be just under the one point nine four billion statewide annually. Um, so it just doesn't seem like a very realistic ask. I think we should be much more prudent in what we're asking for this legislative session. For instance, for funds that have been set aside for C C A, um what potential incentives are there for our district? Mass timber, for instance. Uh, I know that there's an appetite, I think statewide, to look into why insurance has gone up so much. And if there's ways to either limit liability and exposure or to, you know, to cap premiums or to have the state chip in, I think there's there are issues where we could move the needle. I think asking for two billion more dollars statewide annually. Um, I think it'll tend to diminish credibility um rather to, rather than improve it. And then more broadly, I think there's a larger political question. Do we want state funding to be even more centralized? We have one of the most centralized state funding in the country. It's sixty-eight percent. I don't think that we're treated particularly fairly under that model. I don't think that it's worked out particularly well in the six years post-McLeary. I would like to see more autonomy for local districts, so.
I I think I need to focus on what's being presented and not like.
Well, that wasn't the.
That is important. So so we, like each individual district have either needs or wants a little bit different, but we are doing this collective. So as a collective, this is where we align together, and we are, we are in agreement. This is a collaboration. I think we, this is an opportunity for us to start building those bridges across districts, but also with the legislators saying like, this is like, we look the same as other districts where we're distant. And you're asking, you sometimes say, Merce, I'm buying think different because you're thinking of other things that 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 might not impact to the rest of the students of the Washington. We're showing them, yes, it is exactly the same. It's a mirror. It just looks different because we're a middle-sized district instead of a large district. So so I think that in terms of the town hall, uh, I think it's the first step and the first conversation to open doors and sit down on the table and say like, where do we go from here? There's two billion dollars stamped. I know that the needle will is likely moved, but the o- the opening the door to change the funding program is where we we have to to move towards. So I think that that's our end goal. And we have to see that this is just like kind of the initial, we're opening the door to get into that conversation. And we have to bring solutions when it's kind of struggled out on changing the program. We cannot just expect them to do everything. We have to come with uh and yes, and 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 right now they don't have any, and probably we have to still collaborate with our districts and what are we willing to give in and out to change the program, right? So so I think that is just the first step.
Yeah, and this, and these three topics are the ones that like that this Christina. Yeah, and this, and these three topics are the ones that, like, that, as Christina said, that everyone has consensus on that are important. And, um, and, and then there's a group presentation, you know, for the first half of this program, and then, and the second half, we'll be breaking out with our own, uh, in our own divisions again. So like, we'll be meeting, we can meet with the forty-first, um, along with the parents and students of those schools. And I think that's, it's just another chance to sort of drive that message home. I think the thing that, the message we got from the people who ran the, the first town hall was just what a big influence it was on the legislators to see a thousand voters in a room, you know, on a weekend night saying, we're so interested in these teachers with their schools, and to see that there's consensus, a long thing. So you can't say like, well, Mercer Island, you're already so like hashtag blessed with your, you know, foundations and your, you know, fun, funding. You don't need to worry about these things. It's also like, but we're in partnership with schools who do have needs, you know, or like, we're across our region, this is a need. Um, so that's the point of collaborating with other districts and trying to work over. Um, this is a program that, you know, that we're, we're helping to, to put on, um, and participate with these other districts. The PTA is taking the lead, but we, you know, we're being very supportive on a district level, on our, on director level. Um, and then these two letters are the ones that the PTAs want, are separate from the town hall, and they want to send out. Um, and they would like it to be from, they'd like us to sign on to spend. So it's kind of two different issues.
So, I, I, and so the question also goes for, for those who were yesterday at the PTA meeting, for Fred and Deborah.
It didn't really come up.
No, I, no, I, my question is, uh, uh, because I did email, uh, uh, the PTA when they were doing these letters, uh, so Fred maybe knows, but knows better, but on what the previous town hall, they said that one of the biggest impact was just, instead of only saying material supporting operation costs, we had to include utilities and insurance because that makes sense to the community and to the legislators. But M-SOC doesn't mean a lot to those who are not really involved with education or anything like that. So having that wording here in the letter, like adding, uh, uh, and I, I don't know how I, I phrase it the other way, but, um, uh, but it, it kind of brings the message on, on, it's not just photocopies, it's not just, it is about state to the operation without liability. You know, open school, right? We, we know that, so, uh, so, so, um, so I don't know if I know the official one for that, because I didn't see the change one point to that point, and the same here.
I don't know about the letter piece. It's clearly in your, um.
I think it was up and left.
It could have been.
No, they, and they, they voted and approved it. There just wasn't a conversation and all that stuff, that's all I'm saying. And I don't, I mean, as far as the community, does the community understand it? I don't know. Our legislators certainly understand M-SOC. They know what it is and maybe know what it entails.
I, I, I'm just, uh, saying that was something that, that one of the big pickaways from the town hall meeting, that that was, that changing that language made a difference on the conversation that they had with.
So, but you're saying, so different than material supplies and operations?
Uh, and that's, don't worry, I feel that that is, I was just curious if that conversation.
When the, when the big conver, yeah, no, that conversation did not happen at the PTA, at the PTA council meeting. They really just kind of rang through it and said, do we support it? And, and they said yes. That we don't vote, that we don't vote on.
It doesn't matter. What are you guys looking, sorry, what are you guys looking for from the board as far as like? So, uh, that if we want to sign, uh, the letter as a board, uh.
Yeah, the letter with the PTA council sending out.
Then right now, it's a draft, uh, so your name is.
Well, they approve it.
Yeah.
The PTA council approved it. Yeah, no, I know, I know, I saw that, I'm not worried about that. Yeah.
So it is, uh, it is all to support, instead of individual voting, like, I support this, it is all as a board to support this, uh.
Do we have to take a vote in this part of the meeting? I don't think, but we couldn't like individually like say whether we agree with something or not, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, you're.
It's like a thumbs up, thumbs down kind of thing, I think.
Yeah, but I, it's not, it went on the agenda.
I mean.
But no, I'm sure for action.
No.
Oh, it is?
We noted it in there, noticed it yesterday, so that you, you could do that. Usually you do a thumbs up or thumbs down, that's what you've done in the past on that. Uh, but if you want to call to an official vote, um, that's it. I, I would, yeah, if it's an official letter, I think there should be a vote on it.
Yeah.
You want to talk about?
No, just, so there's, the two letters are very similar. One is, one is gonna be like from PTA and the district, like us, basically. And the, the PTA, and then one is, and Fred, and then the, the second one will be going out later, and that's the one that will have all the community signatures. Um.
But us too.
But us too. So, um, should we, can we just approve both of these that we're sending on to them? Is that?
To move a motion to, to.
Just, just be real specific, like a motion to approve, letter one and letter two.
No, I'm just, uh, if it's, I, I, I'm not, I, I want to participate in the town hall. I think it's really important. I think the concept of, of the whole thing is great. The letter, I don't understand. If it's a letter from the PTA, it should be a letter from the PTA. If it's a letter from all of us, it should be a letter from all of us. So, or, and, and then we're, so I guess I'm just a little bit confused.
So, so in this specific, I think I will talk about the letters and the town halls, I think, and that they're separate things. Uh, so the town hall will, will, it's a collaborative with other districts with our PTA to, to just show how, how many of us we're supporting. Then, like, we are, uh, it, it is not us, school district, but it's also the PTA and the community per se. It, it, uh, adds the collaborative of saying, we all see this as an issue, and we are, uh, bringing this to your attention, to bring you, make you accountable, right? Uh, but it's not, uh, just pretend of by itself. It's, we, like, the whole eye line. We are pretty much asking this, uh.
Can I, I, I'm. Dr. Rondell, are you signing on to this as superintendent?
Yes, as superintendent. My, my plan is, um, and with my colleagues, um, and I'll be with them tomorrow, is that we'll sign along with this. The associations, I think, are doing something different with, with WEA. Um, but my hope would be that if we have the board and the PTA, um, these are the big three that we've all been supportive of. I don't think it limits us to also advocate for the other things in your legislative priorities. You have a lot of different things that you put in there. These are the big three that are, are at least ones we can all agree on. But I still think we should continue when we're down at Olympia, or when we're working with, uh, our local forty-first, to remind them of those other things. Some of those were, um, uh, you know, hey, we're gonna provide incentives on electrification of things that Mercer Island School District isn't left out. Those are all things that don't, to me, don't preclude us from those things.
Okay.
This is just what we at least all agree on, this five districts.
And also with the PTA, because PTA has their own, sorry, so, so this is what we, we.
So it's basically a legislative priority list from these entities. Like what we prepare.
Right.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I mean, there's one district of those five that we have a difference of opinion on when it comes to the EP and Olin and regionalization. And that's not on here. And we, we're gonna have disagreements and districts aren't gonna agree on everything. Um, but as I said, if they can fund any one of these three, particularly M-SOC or special education, that's gonna be a win across the board. Um, it doesn't mean I'm not gonna be pushing with all of you on those other issues too, that are important to us.
Okay. So, motion. So, motion to approve letter one and sign on with the PTA and Fred.
Okay, okay. All in favor of approving letter one, please say aye, students.
Aye.
Board members.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any objections? Okay, that's two zero four one. Ayes, nays.
Um. Motion to approve letter two, which will grow up at some future date with more, with like community signatures as well. Essentially repeating the same as the initial letter one, but with more backing from the community. Sort of the, uh, save again approach.
Second motion. Motion to approve letter two as described. Um, all in favor of saying aye, students.
Aye.
Board members.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Uh, so two zero four one, ayes, nays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've got to work really hard, and I look forward to supporting you out every June.
And then we'll have the budget webinar for the district the next night, um, which will be recorded and made available, but, um, it'll be a busy, a busy week.
This is a great handout, by the way, that should go out.
Yeah, and I'll double check some of those directed votes. Thank you for pointing that out. I'll get with our team tomorrow.
So, and can I, uh, is this the time that you want feedback for this or not yet?
Sure.
Uh, just thinking that each of the legislators that will also look at this number, it's very hard. So, uh, just, uh, think about it, how somebody that is, uh, maybe, as those are cold like and have difficulty reading.
Is it the white letters, the white numbers?
I think the white numbers, like, I think it absolutely doesn't, uh, doesn't help. And the red, uh, the, the red numbers.
It's a really tiny.
Yeah, like, give it to, to, take it to, uh, I don't know, just, just think about it.
Bring it to me.
Yeah. At the second that they see this, so, uh, yes, yeah, it's just, that's, that's my own opinion.
Along with the numbers, I would mention that the salary and benefits I'm adding in, I'm just particularly to the public.
Correct.
Like looking at that.
Yep.
I, I know legislators probably recognize that, but we don't mind just seeing that and think it's calm.
Got it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, even if the white members have like a border around the line, edge on one side, but those black persons, they were like supportive on the school.
The part on the red, but, okay.
Three, board announcements, inquiries, and reports.
Yeah, we act, this is actually kind of related to the legislative topic, but, um, Lucy and I were thinking of like, since you guys are doing a lot of like across district collaboration on like legislative priorities, we're thinking of like connecting with like other student reps, like for example, in the Bellevue, Lake Washington, um, like districts and like collecting like, cause for the linkage, like we tried getting like student testimonials, right? Doing a similar thing and then like sending that as a letter to the legislators as like, oh, this is what it looks like in schools, like you've seen the numbers, like this is, this is what, where like students are being impacted. So, yeah. Well, thoughts, good idea?
Okay, agreed with that. And I know that in that other town hall, um, not in the joint presentation, because that was sort of carefully programmed with like one from each organization, you know, like superintendent, whatever. Um, but in the breakout sessions that followed with each assembly, they, those are for solicitors. So if that's something that you, if you feel like you'd like to get involved in, um, then, you know, we could, uh, you know, you could do the ticket active hole and that, like you did with the legislative.
So that'd be for the January eighth.
Yeah.
Uh, what, I don't know.
Yeah.
So what are the actual town lots on that flyer?
So who are the people that are organizing that that we would need to like reach out to?
Um. Christina and I are going to be leaving that, so we'll, we'll tell you later.
Okay.
Be fun surprise for later. They're happy to volunteer. Yeah, what is volunteer?
Well, they can have that data, so. And, and I will say that, that student voices, we have known, uh, impacts a lot more than the adult voices. So, so, uh, I will say that those, that in, in Mercer, that you know that are interested in these type of things, invite them along. I think that, that is part of, um, they should go and have discussions.
And we will be asking later, I'm sorry to, um, keep talking, but we will be asking later with the, uh, with the town hall for you to reach out to students and just get, do you know, we give extra credit? Yeah, there you go.
Yes, always.
Always. Okay, Christina.
How we start there? Um, I just wanted to, um, just, just, since our meeting, we were, uh, many of us were at the laws of confidence, and I just, um, appreciate the opportunity to, um, not only be there and learn, but also to, you know, so much of our learning and growing and understanding comes from the informal moments as well. Um, I know Lucy couldn't come. I hope your surgery went well. Good. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I found it really rewarding and, um, it was quite likely my last one, so I don't know that I would go next year. But, um, that, and I, uh, this week was at, uh, middle school pack meeting, their tier one meeting. Um, still talking about tier one interventions and, um, talked about the new party policy. Um, and really trying to, they've been keeping a very close track of tardies and classes and reasons and, um, and then, uh, trying to hold kids accountable and had a little discussion on the whole reflection detention, um, thing. So, just a joke, because the kids all call it detention, and the adults all call it reflection time.
And the woman that is in charge of reflections is worried that.
Yeah, oh, the reflect, the reflections comp, Julie Shea was concerned that, that it's gonna. Right. So, so, uh, that, yeah, valid point. So, yeah, they, she might ask people to change those names. Um, and then I'll have the PTA council meeting yesterday. Uh, we really didn't talk about, that was very quick. The stuff that we, from, from what you brought us, that it really wasn't, didn't come up. Just so you know, I hadn't had a chance to tell you that yet. And, um, frankly, the main parts, well, there were two main parts of the meeting. One was, um, I gave information on the bond, just in terms of actually what, what the district, what we're looking at. And then, um, and then, uh, Janet McCollum presented from CMEPS and, and the role of how that's gonna work. And then, um, we had a presentation from, uh, MYFS on, uh, the health, the.
Youth survey.
Youth survey, thank you, and some of the results, and they kind of previewed some of that, but I know we'll see, but in terms of use and, um, of substances and things like that. So that was a, um, little preview of, of, they haven't had the results for that long, and I know that we'll see things later on in the, in the school year from our leadership on that too. So those were, oh, and then the last thing is, we already talked about DECA, that the DECA competition regional is tomorrow at, um, at the, uh, made an hour at seven thirty for judging. Um, it really is an amazing, um, event to see thousands of high schoolers and over, I think, I thought Jen said over three hundred, but there were a lot of kids, yeah. Um, competing and seeing them in the element, and, and our school does it a little bit differently than some of the other schools. But, you know, if you're enrolled in a business program, then it's part of the course. Um, so it's just, you know, keep your ears open in the future. Um, or even just, you know, pop in and, and observe some of it, because it really is pretty cool to see our students putting their learning into action, you know, on the health youth survey, and one of the key areas is my education is relevant to our, my future. And like, this is a prime example of, um, you know, our kids who are, have interest in business and entrepreneurship and, and can then, you know, do things with it. So.
Um, few updates. Uh, so there was an island park, uh, pack, like, last week. Um, a few things that came up there. One, there was a parent that had, uh, questions about the Torrance test for creative thinking. Uh, was the feedback and sort of how that's used and if you want to still maintain it. Um, another thing is there was a discussion of potential school construction bonds. I mentioned, mentioned mass timber. And it turns out one of the leading figures in mass timber, uh, lives on the island, a woman named Susan Jones, who is instrumental and, um, uh, some of the regulation that allowed for, I think, up to eighteen story buildings to be built with mass timber. Uh, so might be, uh, an individual to reach out to, particularly when we're looking, uh, for perhaps like legislative, uh, help. Uh, sort of a track record of that. And, uh, her portfolio is really cool.
Quick question on that. Was, is that a current parent or is she, is a resident?
I think it's a resident, as far as I'm aware, not a parent, but an island resident, Susan Jones, Mass Timber. Um, there was also Maggie Thai and I, uh, last week, it was the first, um, meeting for the facilities naming committee. Um, it was cool to see the interest, uh, in the community and the island for that. Um, just high-level, uh, conversation about various considerations. One of the things Maggie Thai and I talked about, uh, I guess earlier this week, was I think there's really sort of two different paths. was I think there's really sort of two different paths it could take, assuming that the recommendation of the committee is for some sort of policy. Uh, the majority of policies appear to be, you know, sort of have like a list of various considerations, um, to go into if you're going to name a facility. But I would not say they're particularly like prescriptive and isn't necessarily, once you adopt it, it's like, okay, what do we do on, right? Um, and, and still like on each time, we'll be like, okay, like here's some factors for, here's some factors against, but doesn't provide much direction. An alternative, which would be more unusual as far as I can tell, and something that the committee will explore, would be something a little bit more prescriptive and mechanical, that would almost be like a, a, a long list, shortlist, where every, you know, every year, uh, I hand, you know, there's a, a process through a committee where there's a recommendation of various like individuals and potential facilities that could be named. Uh, and then the board takes a vote on it, um, and would just be more systematic versus one ox where you're weighing, you know, just various factors without much guidance, but anyways, that's a preview there. The third is, you know, I think we're in the midst, I know for like seniors of applying to college, and one of the things that's come to my radar is particularly, both, you know, post pandemic, Washington and California are the only two states where there's fewer testing opportunities for the SATs now than there was pre pandemic. And that it's become a real hardship, uh, for many students to, to take, uh, the SAT and, uh, you know, involved flying to distant locations, which I think they're not apt to do the best on the SAT, um, and then also just like the equity with that, which, you know, students are able, uh, to have like the time, uh, and expense of, of, of going outside the area to take it, and there is this potential solution that the district could look into, um, which would be offering it in schools, other districts.
Before you talk about a solution, I, I'm trying to read, I'm not, where do you get your data? Cause I went online and there were openings in Seattle and for March, May and June. So I'm just curious where the data and where the problem is.
Yeah, I mean, so I mean, this is something where I think it'd be, you know, good to hear from the community, I've, I've asked community members where their students have taken it, and I have not heard that, that there is easy availability.
No, these are, these are numerous, I, I, I can't, I mean, I can speak to where my daughter took it and that it was a little challenging, but, um, but I can tell you, I looked up March, and again today, March, May and June, and there's in downtown Seattle for each of them, so if it isn't, I guess I'm just looking, I, I don't want to be presenting for operational solutions to our superintendent if we haven't identified.
Yeah, I mean, so I think there is a problem, I've signed up, I have not seen availability, I think I would propose that the board look into this at the next study session, hopefully there's direction at that study session, if not, um, we can always have, I, I'm more than happy to bring forward a resolution that we can take a vote on, as we vote on Miniman.
Well, you sound like we're sure that there's a problem yet, so maybe people should look themselves.
Okay, well, I, I, yeah, and, and I have been, reached out to other districts and some of that information has been.
Today to sign up and I could.
If, if we don't explore it, we can, I will bring it as a resolution and we can have a vote on it. And if the other directors don't think it's a problem and they don't want to discuss it, then that's fine.
I think, I mean, I, it.
It'll be reflected.
It could be if.
Let's knock it.
It could be interesting for the board to, to maybe, like I know I have asked at the high school, you know, like, hey, why can't we have the SAT here? Um, you know, Oliver took the SATs in Friday Harbor and then he took, but then like registered and took them, you know, with a month's notice in Bellevue, so. You know, initially it was kind of hard and then there was a bunch available, so, you know, it, it was quite a varied experience, um. But I was quite satisfied with the response I got from the high school about why we weren't offering SAT at the school, like the logistics aspect of it, so I think maybe it might be instructive for, for the members who come and ask the question, um, just, you know, hey, why don't we offer it? Cause there's, there's a lot of hurdles to the, with the college board to offering it, um, on the weekend. And then there's a lot of hurdles, different hurdles with offering it as a, during a school day. Um, and I think before we do any like prescriptive measures or make any, have any ideas of how to solve the problem, we should see, I mean, assess like, is it a consistent problem, like, yeah, for one of our tests, we went to Friday Harbor, but for the other one, we went to Bellevue, um. Is it a consistent problem and is there a solution that's, that's workable? You know, especially, especially in a year like, you know, this year where we've lost already three days to power outage. Do we lose another instructional day to SAT testing, what happens with our school calendar, if we start adding that in? And then if it's a weekend, my understanding is that we can't prioritize Mercer Island students for the weekend testing, so is that really helping us? By offering, you know, is this a lot of questions that we haven't even started to address and I would love to, without much, without placing undue burden on our admin team, because, um, to, you know, to like research it or whatever, but like, I think it could be useful to hear some explanation of why we haven't done this in the past, if we need, if that's, if that's a question that the board wants to have answered. I, um, I found it a very easy answer to arrive at, because I asked the person that the, the testing moved that the back to school, and they were like, this is why we don't operate, I was like, okay, that makes sense. Um, but I think that's, I mean, I don't want to get in the business of telling our administration how to resolve problems if I'm not sure, and separate priorities for problems, if we haven't even assessed that it is a problem.
It, it's operations, it's not policy, if someone wants to propose a policy that addresses pre collegiate testing or in availability or something, that's a whole nother thing. Again, it's the why, not the how, and, um.
Preparing outreach to let people know earlier in the year that the future. Eva and Lucy, what are you guys hearing right now, are you hearing about people having trouble registering?
I know, at least I'm a junior, so everyone I know is taking the SAT right now, and it's a really wild mix, like I know for the December one, I know a lot of people who took it, like there was one at, like a Hilton or like, uh, you know, right near beach and stuff, like, most of the people I know for that one took it pretty close, I do know a few people for the November one that had to like drive out and stay overnight, but a lot of that, like I was able to take November one at right near beach, so I think there's just varied experience depending on when you sign up, so I would agree that like, doing outreach to like tell people to sign up early is really good, cause it can be hard to know that you have to sign up early to get a good slot, people just don't have that knowledge.
Yeah, and personally, I took the SAT one time at Moses Lake, just like three and a half hours away. And then one, one time in Olympia, which was like such a struggle, especially cause like a couple of times I had to like drive myself back, it was just, it was like really terrible, but, um, I think that doesn't, I feel like opening a testing, testing site on Mercer Island might not like automatically fix like the testing accessibility to our students. Cause like, for example, like if we open a testing site, I'm pretty sure other students in other districts might, if it's on the weekend. Well, this is what I've heard, or, cause I've ta, also talked to the principals and different people that have, um, considered it in the past, like, these are some of the reasons why, cause Mercer Island has considered it, and so, yeah, I think if people are interested, like, some individual research might be, um.
It sounds, it sounds really, there's some interest on the part of the board in just finding out whether this is a current problem, is there like an easy way to do that, whether asking or testing with people or?
Yeah, I mean, I, what I hear is, go ahead.
Tell me first.
I, I was gonna say, you know, what I hear from the conversation, because, you know, there are a couple of you during your tenures on the board have asked the question, um, there's the question of, you know, just like anything that you want to know more about as a board, it could be an interesting thing of, of an interest of you as a board to learn more from staff and provide you as much information, I think that's different than, once you have that information, that what do you want to do with it as a board, and having solutions today versus solutions then, um, you know, they can always change, but, you know, we have Debbie Hanson and we have some really thoughtful people at the high school who have considered it lots of different ways and, um, they have different reasons as to why we offered it or not offered it, and what would be the implications of adding it to a school day, not adding it to a school day. Um, you know, I've always said, when the board wants to know more information about something, you know, we're always happy to provide the information if that's an interest of the board.
What I would just want to mention is that I think this conversation has come through the different tenor of, because we get those kids that went to high school. And this will be the same as the board keeps changing, and you have new parents and, and, uh, and, and I will say that as an international, uh, parents, uh, that I did go to high school in the U S, uh, it does bring a level of anxiety, not understanding kind of why, and, and, and so, um, I will be very satisfied with the frequent ask questions kind of that. Yeah, we'll provide, say like this, uh, this is why at this moment in time, that it will be a very easy way to give me answers. Uh, if, uh, if I see that there's not a systemic problem of my, our kids, uh, not, uh, having access. Uh, I will say that for what I hear, there is some, it's, it's luck. Sometimes you get a site three, uh, hours away and then maybe Deborah had one that it was very nearby, so, so depending on when you find it, it's a little bit of luck. Uh, I did start it about a, a little bit on the equity lens, and at the same time, I hear from all our students that they're testing three times, so I feel that there's an equity issue here. I think it is an over, I mean, uh, uh, I will take that equity lens, I think it's more on the performance that it is made for those students that need to be at home or that have a, an I E P or fireboard, that will be something that will make them perform better or feel at ease during tests, but, uh, but it will be very specific to that, uh, that group of students, not necessarily, uh, the other way around, so.
Yeah, like I know that the, I think some of my friends have taken the A C T with I, with I E P plans and I O four plans at the high school, so, yeah.
I think that, um, it, it's not, that it's not an interest and it's not, and it has been a struggle, there's no question. Um, I think the issue is that this, we don't direct the high school to provide a specific program, we have amazing staff who, counselors, we have a college and career person, we have a testing person, we have a principal and two associate principals, and this is their job. And we have a superintendent who supervises all of them, and if they're gonna know if students aren't able to do the things that they need to do in preparation for college, and it's not our individual roles on this board, to then go and tell them how to do it, how to provide it. If, um, I, I am very confident that if there was a systemic problem, um, of our students be able to, being able to do things and being, um, kept from applying to college, that they would be fixing it. And, um, the only thing I can think of is that it was a post COVID, you know, and college board makes it extraordinarily difficult, we don't even, I don't know why we're even talking about it this much. There hasn't been demonstration that there's a problem, it's an individual effort by one board director who thinks he's the only one who cares about rigor in our high schools and wants our kids to succeed with, no, no, I am gonna go there, cause it's wasting our time. I, I was. You've got three parents here who have ushered their kids through the SAT process and we're all telling you that we managed. And you've got a superintendent. What?
There's nothing the district could do bad.
The district, it's not this board's responsibility, if you want to propose a policy, then, no, you didn't propose a policy. No, I'm not, I'm not done yet, I'm not done. Okay, but I was speaking.
I just wanted to drop everyone's attention, it's almost nine thirty, we must have an executive session.
So why are we still talking about this? So, okay, so this is operations, not policy, and it has taken up too much of our time, and this single, it's a violation and a violation and a violation of board policy, it will be handled and, or addressed, I mean, and enough already, if there is consensus, then let's put it somewhere, and if there isn't, move on, please.
This is the first time it's been brought up.
Christina.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so like where's all the time?
Dan, sorry. Here, motion. Order. Uh, it does not sound like right now we have a consensus that this is something that we want to bring in front of the board, so I'm just gonna leave it like that for right now, and if the board as a whole wants to ask for this, there's someone to come and present to us about it, we can take it up at the next meeting, because it's already almost nine thirty and we're still not done going through board members, so. Okay, can we just table it for now? Okay, did you do your, um, announcements?
I want your JESS. It was great.
Okay, great. Go JESS. Christina.
Uh, I went to see, uh, uh, it was great, uh, just had to say two things, uh, I had, uh, uh, the city was there, they were talking about how they handle emergencies along the partnership with the city, and I went to, uh, recognize that the, the school too, because I went to, uh, the women's club lunching yesterday, and there were so many people that acknowledged that, that the middle school was open, that they were able to go and charge their, their devices and everything that they needed without being overwhelmed of going all the way to the north end of the island, so I appreciate the district to open that and all the effort that happened during the blackout, that it would have to be even angle that it was a lot of work, uh, we saw you at once that handling that. Uh, uh, I, I really much appreciate that, uh.
Are there electric chargers at the, at the cars at the middle school?
I think there's three or four.
Were those operating too?
I doubt it.
I know.
Our generator.
I see, I see. I know, just, cause I'm just thinking in terms of like, it was a, as an electric car driver, it was like a really big challenge to be without power for so long.
And my other, my other, uh, thing that I want to mention is that I went yesterday to the, uh, high school P T A meeting that they had, and I want to say that I really appreciate the district, they showed Nick talk about the emergency plan, in terms of how people was locked down or response. And now I feel so sure that if something happens, the school knows what to do and what will happen to my kid, and I really trust, the conversation was fantastic, it was not recorded because of safety, but I really appreciate having Nick and all the effort on the emergency plan that each school has, because now I know better and I would have liked to have that room full of parents at that, uh, we did a fantastic conversation, and also the partnership with, uh, Versailles, uh, uh, you know, some of the services, I'm talking to this with, with that, so, uh, just want to say acknowledge that that was, um, I, I appreciate those partnerships, and thank you for the distribution.
And my only, um, like most other people I assisted at Wasda, and I did one of my like required Wasda trainings, um, and did, uh, discover educational disparities, and I thought it was really interesting, um, it was, um, it, it, it was about learning the difference between sort of like disparities in student outcomes, based on say, gender, you know, sex or race or whatever, or gender, I guess, um, and disparities in students' educational opportunities, so like kind of being able to tease those, those things out, I thought it was really worth attending for those who haven't done it yet, so, and I have P T A D E I committee tomorrow. Um, that is it, I think, um, we have, uh, we are going into executive session to, to review the performance of a public employee, pursuant to R C W forty-two dot thirty dot one ten one G. Um, it's nine thirty-two, uh, do you think we need twenty-four? Fifteen minutes?
Ten minutes?
Ten minutes, okay, the board will be in executive session until nine forty-five, let's say. Um, can I have a motion and a second to resist into executive session? Okay, and then, uh, sorry, uh, all in favor of going into executive session? You can go, like, uh, board members, all in favor of going into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Um, that's five to zero. Um, so we will be back at nine forty-five.
Do you want to use the conference room upstairs? That way we can hear.